The special meeting of the Township of Belleville, zoning court of adjustment for, uh... Oh, March 19th, 2019 will now come to order. Clerk call the roll.
Bennett. Caruso.
Here.
Giornata.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Lozlo. Valentino.
Here.
Henley.
Sheldon.
Here.
The loud up. Phil Garcia.
Here.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, everyone, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay. Um, has notices this meeting been given according to the Sunshine Law, Madam Secretary?
Certification has been advertised according to the Sunshine Law.
Okay. We won't be voting on any minutes tonight. And, uh, there won't be any applications for adjournment unless Mr. Gassion don't want to proceed.
We are prepared to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's no resolutions being, uh, being voted on tonight. And no communications. Okay? Okay. So we'll go right to our first case, and our only case, ZB 2019-04, 534-538 Union Avenue, R Square Realty LLP. Their applicant is seeking approval to convert the existing two... The two existing ground floor commercial spaces into one restaurant with two bars. Residential units will not be altered, which I believe are on the second floor.
That is correct.
Mr. Gassion, go ahead.
I've been, uh, I've reviewed notice and publication, and they are in order.
Okay. And they will be listed as A1 for evidence, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam, uh, Mr. Gassion, the floor is now yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of Ward Council name is Robert Gassion. The firm is Gassion Palaco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, R Square Realty LLP. My clients are the owners of 534-538 Union Avenue in Belleville. One parcel has been used as a bar for an extended period of time, in fact, as long as I can remember. And the corner property has changed over the years, mainly being restaurant use. My clients are seeking to convert the two commercial spaces into one restaurant and allow the two residential uses on the second floor to remain as is. The property is in a BA neighborhood retail mixed-use zone, and restaurants are not permitted. An approval, however, was granted in 1986 for a tavern and restaurant at the property. But we are converting the other portion of the property, and therefore that is an expansion of a non-conforming use, non-conforming but approved in 1986. The witnesses we'll hear from are Mike Otovic of R Square Realty, the architect, and the engineer and planner. Mr. Otovic will discuss the proposed operation and discuss his parking arrangement with the nearby property owner. The architect, Raoul Cabado, will review the interior alterations and discuss the proposed improvements to the exterior. The final witness will be Anthony Marucci, who will discuss the existing and proposed site and review the planning reasons that, in his opinion, justify the board's approval of this application. I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Otovic.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony or about the give shall be the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell?
Otovic.
Your first and last name. Spell your first and last name.
Mike Otovic. M-I-K-E. Last name is Otovic. O-T-O-V-I-C.
Thank you.
Mr. Otovic, what is your home address?
Uh, 60 Modern Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07304.
And your occupation?
Real estate development.
And are you the owner of 534-536 Union Avenue in Belleville?
Yes, I am.
Are you the sole owner?
I'm not.
Who is the other owner?
Bruges Galati.
And for how long have you owned the property?
Approximately a year.
And how is it being used?
Uh, currently being used as a restaurant bar, first floor vacant, and two residential units on the top, on the second floor.
And what is it you're seeking approval to do?
Uh, we're seeking approval to convert the existing two spaces, which are commercial, into one restaurant bar.
And who will be the owner-operator should this application be approved?
Uh, that would be Dublin LLC, Keith McKean.
And what experience does he have in operating, uh, bars or restaurants?
Well, they currently operate two Class A properties in New York City. Uh, one is the Grayson, First Avenue, First Street, and the Mercury Bar. They've been in the bar business for the past 12 years, operating approximately five bars, restaurants so far.
And what are the projected hours of operation again should this be approved?
Should this be approved, we're looking to operate, and, um, we're not being asked to be held to these hours, but we're far going to take a look at how operations operate and how business goes. But our intent is to operate between the hours of 4:00 and 2:00, Monday through, um, Thursday, uh, Friday, between the hours of 3:00 and 2:00, and Saturdays and Sundays between the hours of 12:00 and 2:00.
And how many employees do you expect to have at this location?
Uh, anywhere between 6 and 10.
And what would the maximum number of employees be at any one time?
On the busiest days, 8.
And how will the second floor be used?
As currently is an existing two-unit residential.
So there'll be no change for the second floor?
No changes. Correct. No changes to the second floor.
And did you, have you done, well, strike that. Are there parking spaces in the rear?
There are currently.
And how many spaces will be available in the rear of the building?
Four, as currently.
And will those be dedicated to the residential tenants?
Yes, as they are existing.
And, uh, how about deliveries? How will they be made to the site?
So currently, we have enough space in the back to put four cars in tandem and as well as about approximately 10 feet by 20 feet of freedom. It's going to be mostly box trucks in the back, not obstructing the speed or not obstructing anything in the front and delivering to the backside entrance.
So there's room to have the four cars parked and pull the box truck in? Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
And did you make any arrangement with any neighbors for additional parking should it become necessary?
We did.
And would you use a valet if that was necessary for that parking on the neighbor's property?
Yes. Pending operations, depending how everything goes, we intend to utilize that lot across the street.
And specifically, which lot is that?
That's the lot that's directly across the street. That's the automotive body shop. I believe it's JMS.
Auto repair shop.
Auto repair shop.
And with regard to the expected customers, uh, do you think you'd have local trade? Do you think you'd have, how would people arrive at your location?
So we anticipate to have the local community or the local town participate mostly because this is supposed to be a local sports bar slash restaurant. So we anticipate a lot of walk-in traffic and a lot of, uh, Uber traffic and as well as drive-in traffic. I know people drive in, primarily. But, uh, it's going to be primarily be, consist of local, the local community at least.
And again, if there's not enough parking available, you have an arrangement with the property owner, catty-corner from you, that is the repair shop, and you have an agreement to park?
Correct.
A significant number of cars on that property if necessary?
Correct.
No further questions, it is witness.
Members of the board, questions?
I have one question for you, Mr. Otovic.
Otovic.
At the beginning of your testimony, did I understand you correctly? You said that the restaurant is currently vacant?
Currently, yes. It was that way when we purchased it. And it is currently, I mean, it's being leased right now, but, uh, there's no use.
But there's no, nothing going on inside of it?
No, we're, that's why we had the application. We're trying to.
Do you know how long it's been vacant?
I don't. When I purchased it, it was vacant. I was told that it was vacant prior to the purchase, which was last April of 2018. I'm not a, I'm not 100% sure as to the exact timeframe.
Mr. DiLorenzo, do you have any idea?
No, I think they pulled their liquor license. I'm not sure. But I think they pulled their liquor license a while ago. I'm not sure.
Or then a couple of years ago?
Yeah, they have.
Before we do anything like this, can we swear in, Mr. Harris or Mr. DiLorenzo?
Yes, Tom.
So any testimony that given, given would be pertinent.
Mike, uh, Tom and Frank, raise your right hand with regard to this application. Do you swear any comments you have made or will make shall be the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, then, Mr. Harris is the ward engineer planner. Mr. DiLorenzo is the, uh, real estate officer. Attaching to the office.
Oh, we may anticipate a little of 20 seconds.
So I guess it's safe to say for at least the last couple of years there's been a lease?
Yes, yeah.
At least two years, sir.
And if I may just add, I'm sorry. We did purchase the liquor license from the previous owner.
Yeah, there might have been some problems. I don't know. It's a police matter. Why did the people let them?
So your license is now okay with the town?
It's been okay and it's been clean. We have no notice of any otherwise because otherwise the sale would have never been able to proceed.
Okay.
Because I did notice online in the public, you said the public notices website that there is currently, um, a transaction of the way to switch the legal, the liquor license to... So is it still in the process of being transferred? Or has it already been transferred?
Had, it's already been transferred. That system is always lagging a bit from the time that we purchased it to when it gets recorded, yes.
The date of the notice was March 7th. So it said it was still in the process of being transferred?
Yeah, I'm pretty certain that they lag a bit.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other members of the board have questions? The witnesses. I have a question. At the beginning of your testimony, I believe you said you are going to be a part-owner of the business, correct?
We are participating.
Right. Now, you also mentioned the hours of operation that you're looking to do, where you said you didn't want to be held by. This board could impose hours of operation. So what is, let's get the maximum hours that you want to work.
Right. So our suspicion is that if, and this is speculative in the sense that if lunch does pick up, we are looking to maybe perhaps open up for lunch.
Well, let me, let me reword this. Give me the earliest you want to open and the latest you want to work to. All right? Because otherwise, if we impose, if we impose hours, then he would have to come back. I want to avoid him having to come back before us.
Would you be looking, possibly, at this time you plan to be 4:00 to 2:00, but is there a possibility you might want to open from 11:00 to 2:00?
Yes.
And would that be what the approval you are seeking is? To be open from 11:00 to 2:00, except I assume on Saturday and Sunday? Or what would you want on Saturday? 11:00 to 2:00, Monday through Friday? What would you want on Saturday and Sunday?
I mean, yes, throughout the week, I guess, 11:00 to 2:00.
11:00 to 2:00. All right.
So it would be 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM the next morning?
He does not at this time plan on opening at those hours, but he certainly would not like to be foreclosed from doing that.
But the reason I'm saying this is because if the board was to impose hours, then he would have to come back.
I understand. I thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome. So the earliest would be 11:00. You don't want to go earlier than 11:00?
No.
Okay.
11:00 to max.
Max. No problem. Thank you.
I have another question. And for this, I think I'm going to need the expertise of Mr. Reko. Uh, according to the project narrative, this is, this application is in BA zone, which does not allow restaurants. But in 1986, a previous zoning board gave approval for the operation of a restaurant. But my question is, if there's been a discontinuation in the use of this property, if it hasn't been used as a restaurant or at least...
It would have to change to something else.
It has to change to.
If it doesn't change, the use has never been changed.
Okay.
Now, I believe part of the reason we're here is the corner property was never really a restaurant. It was a sandwich shop.
Correct. Agreed.
It never got approval for a restaurant. That's why I believe we're here. Okay?
It, it, there's a possibility of it, if it's abandoned for a certain length, for a particular length of time, and there's no rule. Uh, and if there's an intent to abandon and it's just left alone to rot, basically, that could be abandonment, but that's a whole other body of proof, and we're not, we don't want to go there.
That is my concern, if there had been effectively an abandonment here in this previous, uh, rule of direction. And a gate.
It's intent and, and what happens and what the intent is, and that's beyond really what we can do tonight.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, thank you.
And there's more to it in that this is a variance, is there by variance, without getting into old board act, abandonment, but it's there by variance. It's not a pre-existing, non-conforming use. It's a variance permitted to be there, which changes the law.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of the witness? Anybody?
Questions on testimony or questions?
Questions on testimony. Only on testimony, not testimony that you're giving, testimony that he gave. If you have a question about the testimony he gave, that's it. Yes, sir, come up. Please come up. Because we're on video. Please come up and give your name and address.
Charles Reichman, 15 Agnes Street.
Can you spell your last name, please?
R-E-I-C-H-L-A-N. I just wanted to ask the name of the, uh, the owner and how it's helping.
Absolutely. It's Keith McKelon.
M-C-K-E-O-N.
M-C-K?
Q? M-C-K-E-O-N.
E-O-N. Sorry. Irish.
Any other questions by members of the public of the witness based upon testimony? Mr. Gassion, you may call your next witness, ma'am?
Yes, I have a question.
Come on up.
What kind of, uh, great, with your name?
Name and address, please.
Luz L-U-Z. Last name R-U-E-B-A. 16 Agnes Street. I just wanted to, what kind of restaurants are going to be? What kind of establishment is that?
So we're looking to establish a American Bar Grill, sports bar in combination. So this is primarily sports, food, comfort kind of place.
Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, come on up. Come for it.
Maria. Last name Maria, C-A-R-I-E-R-E. Are you proposing to have entertainment, bands?
At this time, we're not.
Name and address, please.
Anna Colio, 231 Graylock Park.
Spell your last name, please.
C-O-R-Y-O.
Thank you.
Um, the, the parking that you're, have range, is there an hour that they start?
As far as we're, as far as our lease is concerned, the availability is available to us from the minute we start to the minute we shut down. That's been arranged with the order.
That property currently is not being utilized. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you have a written agreement?
We have a lease.
You have a lease. Okay.
Just correction.
All right.
Property is not a gas station, but I believe he utilizes it for the purpose of some car repairs.
Go ahead.
Oh, he does.
So my question is, if you start a, you're not blocking the money, and if he's working, um, you'd be able to park cars here?
Yes. We have utilized, we've had an agreement. We've had a multiple conversations. Obviously, this is going to be a bit of a give-and-take relationship with us and the owner, the landlord of the spot, where we're trying to make it work for everyone. So obviously, also at the same time, if we have an event or something, he has been willing to help us even further by having access, full access.
Yes, ma'am, we have another question.
Yeah, Rick Harry. Um, how many spots are you going to have available in that lot that you can park cars? I live in that block, so I don't know. Has a lot of traffic and a lot of cars that he fixes.
Yes. So right now, currently, there are 20 illegal spots. And by that, that means if you park him, not in accordance to what a valet person would park. If valet, if you park him to be a valet, obviously, you're going to squeeze in more than 20. So I don't know. That should, if answer is, well, but there's more than 20.
20 cars in that spot?
Yes.
You say so.
Name and address, please.
543, uh, what happened to the city plan?
For the bar restaurant?
Yeah.
Um, we haven't worked out the numbers yet. Occupancy?
Occupancy. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. First, you're going to have to get sworn if you're going to answer the question. Stand up, please.
Did you raise, raise your right hand, please, with regard to this matter? Do you swear your testimony shall be the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Keith McKelon. M-C-K-E-O-N.
And you're the co-owner?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gassion, you can ask your question.
This gentleman had a question.
Of him?
Yeah.
Well, based upon, well, he, he referred it to him. That's why.
My question was, what occupancy are you planning for the restaurant bar?
Yeah, what would be going off, what if I, what if I were to fire the deal? But I would say, uh, in around 126.
126 for 20 parking spots?
Six.
Can I make a statement real fast?
No. Later. Any testimony is given at the end, and Mr. Gassion and the members of the board could ask questions based upon testimony.
Later on. Clarify one thing for this gentleman.
Sure.
There's a plan submitted that shows the number of seats, just so you can take a look at it.
Am I allowed to respond to that?
What? That, that, you got, there's a plan available?
Sure. Go ahead. Have you guys seen the street at 5 o'clock in the afternoon from the day?
I, I, that's got nothing to do with that.
It does if you live there, sir.
Well, I'm saying about the plans. All right. You'll be able to talk later. Don't worry. I'll let you talk. Anybody else have a question of either of these two gentlemen? Is there the only ones who gave testimony?
Yeah, I have a question.
Of which gentleman?
Um, actually both.
Or either. Ask either. But give your name and address, first.
My name is Marilyn Collier. I live at 548 Union.
Please spell your name, both names.
M-U-R.
M-U-R.
L-I.
Okay.
K-O-D-A-R.
Thank you.
My question is, you're saying it's 1200. Garbage, I live to the.
Ma'am, no testimony.
My question is.
If you want to give testimony, you have to wait till later.
Your question, he certainly has, uh, he's talking about garbage container. He has it in the back.
Okay.
I would like to know what type of garbage container you're talking about.
The size, you mean?
The size, is it uncovered?
If, if I might, the architect is the next witness, and he will describe the garbage container. And you can ask him any question you want about it. Okay?
I have one other question. Um, David, it's a restaurant. Is that going to be also used or, like, tables outside?
At this time, sorry. Well, it's.
Again, it'll be, if it's a lot where it's.
It's a lot of brown.
Well, I'd like, I'd like that, I'd definitely, you know, if it's in the plans or not, I'd like that he opens. Just like I said, I need two doors.
It's permitted there, so they can do it if they want because it's going to be, if they get approved here, it'll be a restaurant, so it'll be permitted. If they want to do it later on, they can. Just got to comply with the ordinance.
You got an answer from the construction coefficient? Better than that. Go ahead. Anybody else have questions? None? Okay.
I have one follow-up question. I'm just a little bit confused about the, the ownership situation. I understand that Mr. Otovic is 50%. Mr. McKelon is the other 50%. But in the project narrative on the business entity disclosure statement, at least Mr. Otovic has a 50% interest. But then there's another individual listed here, Bruges Galati.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, just to clarify, Bruges Galati and myself are partners in the real estate development firm. We own the property. We own the land and the development. Mr. McKelon is the owner of the bar. And we, so we have a different partnership with him. Uh, as far as the, the real estate is concerned, the actual land value, the physical structure, we are the owners, and there's only two of us, myself and Bruges Galati.
All right. Thank you.
Is he involved in, in the business? Or it's only going to be you with him involved in the business?
Just us.
Just you two? So he's just going to be involved in the, in the buildings?
Yes.
Maybe the tenants, the tenants, you with him, not him?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
You said they own an establishment or one establishment in the city? One's called Mercury or one's?
I'm sorry. Can you, I didn't hear you.
I was saying, uh, they stated before that someone operates, um, a location, two of them in New York City?
Correct.
One is Mercury. What was the name of the other one?
The Grayson.
The Grayson?
It's on the First Avenue, First Street.
Any other questions by members of the board or the, or the public based upon testimony? You may call your next witness.
Mr. Cabado.
Look, could you raise your hand, please, with regard to this, uh, application? Do you swear your testimony shall be the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Raoul Cabado, C-A-B-A-T-O.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabado, your business address and your occupation?
Uh, my business is in 35 Journal Square, Jersey City, New Jersey. Uh, my occupation is I'm a licensed architect.
How long have you been practicing in the field of architecture?
Um, I've been licensed, uh, since 1995. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1999.
From what school did you graduate? And what degree did you take?
Uh, I graduated from Temple University in Philadelphia, and I have a bachelor of architecture degree.
Briefly describe for the board or review with the board the benefit of some of your experience in the field of architecture.
Well, I've been, uh, doing a lot of, uh, single and two-family homes in Jersey City. I have, uh, projects ranging from, once again, single two-families to 60 units. Um, and I have presented these projects to various boards.
And have you worked with me on a college in Jersey City that you are the architect on?
Yes, I have.
And are you a member of any societies or professional groups connected with your work?
Yes, I am. I'm a member of the American Institute, Institute of Architects.
And have you?
I think he's good enough.
Thank you, expert. Chairman, then, Mr. Cabado's accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Would you, Mr. Cabado, please describe the existing site?
It's a corner of, should I go to the drawing?
Yes, sure. Whatever way you'd like to do it.
Um, why don't we mark that? I think we have it, but it looks to be in a different, same configuration.
Yes. Exactly. We have a, I'm sorry.
We got a handout that might be helpful if everybody could have it in front of them. So I'd like to mark this.
That's a small one of this.
Yeah. Why don't we mark the handout?
Handout as A2.
A2. And then we can just go from there.
Thank you. Chief, you got one, right? I'm going to try. Ladies first. Could you mind one of the share?
Yeah, you can use. I've got this big thing in front of me. It's the same thing. Can I give us?
I'm trying to get the one last, uh, you can give it. I can spread it around if you would.
Okay. Let's proceed.
Okay. So what we have is a corner building. It's two stories. It's located in the corner of Union Avenue and Agnes Street. It's an irregularly shaped lot. Um, like I said, it's a two-story building. It's frame construction with stucco on the, on the ground floor and, um, siding on the second floor, which is the residential portion.
Describe the existing, you describe the structure a little more detail, if you would, as to what it is right now.
Well, right now, I think it's, it's, it's what we call frame construction. Um, it's, uh, fireproof construction, and, um, it, it's pretty much, uh, wood frame.
Are any alterations or additions planned should this application be approved?
The, uh, any changes are done on the interior. There are no, uh, exterior except for the storefront. And that, that change is pretty much, uh, to continue the streetscape. Uh, we're, we're trying to match the, uh, the line of walls on that street. As it exists right now, the restaurant portion is a bit depressed. Uh, so we're trying, we're going to straighten that wall to make, to, to, basically just to continue the street wall.
And what will the exterior be made of should this application be approved? And I believe we have a handout that you can refer to.
At this point.
To describe that.
I'm, um, if you look at the drawing on sheet A200, um, we have, basically what we're showing is a brick facade with, um, metal and glass, uh, fenestration windows and a metal and glass door.
And there's a difference in material than what was submitted on the original plan. Is that correct? The brick?
That's, that's correct. We're proposing brick.
But the original plan did not propose brick, correct?
That's correct. I'm sorry. Yes.
There's a difference in the material.
There is a difference.
That was submitted on the original plan.
That's correct. Now, it was stucco, now we're going with the brick.
Would you please describe the proposed interior of the restaurant?
I'm referring to sheet A-100. We're showing a combination of fixed and, um, movable seating. On the upper corner, we have a kitchen, which is located towards the rear of the building. We also have a bar on this side, this is going to be fixed seating right here. The main thing that we're doing is we're providing handicap accessible facility, toilet facilities for the customers. I know there was a question raised earlier on about the occupancy. For the purposes of egress and for the purposes of determining the number of plumbing fixtures, we've calculated the number of occupancies to, the number of occupants to be a hundred and sixty. That, of course, could be less, we're just doing this for egress and plumbing fixture purposes. So this is the proposed handicap toilet facility, and as you can see, it's, it's occupying almost half of the, the, the former, I guess, takeout.
Sandwich store.
Sandwich, yes.
Sandwich shop.
Sandwich shop, right. Okay, we're also, so we're trying, we're, in, in compliance with the code, we are going to be handicap accessible. There is a slight rise in, in the ground floor from the sidewalk, and we're proposing to ramp that up as required by code.
Any changes to the interior of the second floor?
No, there are no changes proposed for the second floor.
Now, there was discussion, one of the interested citizens was asking about how the garbage is going to be contained and disposed of. Could you please review that?
Sure, so we're proposing to, we, we have a refuse area that's going to be fenced in. We have a photograph of the proposed fence, right now we have it at six foot high, and it's going to be open towards the sidewalk. The idea being that when they're taking the garbage out, it can just be loaded onto the, the refuse truck.
Commercial street.
Right, Agnes Street, that's correct. It is about a hundred square feet, we're, we're proposing to have garbage for the, for the, the commercial establishment as well as the residence. There's going to be.
In other words, a dumpster will be used for both?
It's not dumpster, we're going to have individual cans, individual, I guess, containers, fifteen gallon.
Within that, within that, that set?
Yes, it's about a hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
So there's going to be a lot.
Ten feet by ten feet, okay. And again, review the exterior, how it will be protected, or how it will be screened?
Oh, the, the exterior, the exterior, let me, I think this is, let's explain it. It's going to be an ornamental fence, it's, right now we have it at six feet, so that's pretty much the, you know, it's like a fence, so it's not.
So nobody could really look over, right?
That's correct.
Now, is the rear yard going to be repaved for the parking, for the four spaces for the tenants, and for the loading and unloading? Will that be repaved?
I guess if, if we have to, yes.
I thought you planned to repay it.
Yes, we're going to repay it.
Would you review the venting within the restaurant, so that there won't be any issue with smells?
Sure, right now, currently, there is a vent stack on the, on the Agnes Street side, we're proposing to eliminate that. The kitchen is located in the rear of the building, so the vent will be coming out from this corner of the building. Now, there's code requirements as to how far I can vent, I believe it's about, if I'm not mistaken, ten feet from the property line, so any, any of the venting will be occurring within our property line, it's going to be venting out towards that open parking area that we showed back in this area here, so it will be up, you know, it's a two-story building, so.
And we, I'm sorry, I was talking about, just review the signage, if you would.
Sure, right now we're proposing signs over these bank of windows over here, the size is dictated by the zoning, so we're, you have absolutely, we're going to comply with that minimum size. I think right now we have it at eighteen inches by eighty-four inches, which turns out to about ten square feet.
And that is in compliance with the municipal regulation?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, this witness. Okay, members of the board, questions?
I had a question for Mr. Cabado, could you go back to the floor plan?
Sure.
Just so that I'm understanding, you're going to be, this is the wall, I guess, the currently separates the two buildings from, from one another? This will be opened up, all right, I understand your, your bathrooms are back here, and these will be ADA compliant. Is there any difference in elevation in the floors between the two existing buildings?
No, no, there is not.
There is, it's all the same level?
That's correct.
All right, I was just concerned that if there was any, any difference in grade, that those who may have some handicapped issues might not be able to easily get between.
If there were, there, there are ways where we could do a, a slight transition, it'll be a code issue, I mean, as soon as the inspector walks in, he's going to cite that, so we're going to have to adjust that.
Well, it's a, a good issue anyway, because you said it, it's all the same level.
That's correct.
Both buildings have the same floor elevation.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board?
This one.
Yes, Mr. Malano.
From, I guess, the original bar on the left, right, to the center where the tables are sitting? From that bar on the left, right, into the transition to the next one, you're telling me there's no step down there?
From, from this floor level?
Yeah.
To this floor level?
I think there is a step down.
Once again, like I said, if there were step down.
If there is, you're going to remedy that.
Right, I mean, it's an older building, of course, there's going to be areas where.
I mean, a physical step down.
Yes.
Now, I'm probably memo for it, I think there's a physical step down.
Sure, and, and once again, if, if there was, we will, we will make sure that we comply with the code.
So you're going to remedy it?
Yes, yes, no tricky handout.
Any other questions by members of the board, Mr. Rochelle?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Malano for that, he had more historical information about the interior of the building than I did.
The philanthropist, right?
Yes, concerning the garbage area, garbage area, you said that that area is going to be used for both the restaurant and the residence upstairs?
Yes, sir.
Who is going to be handling the pickup of the garbage, and you know what time that's going to be happening?
Well, my understa, I'm sorry, my understanding is it's going to be a private, it's going to be a private hauler, so they'll make arrangements with the owners as to the timing, I guess, but it's going to be private.
It's going to be private, you're going to hold both, the commercial and the residential?
I think you might, I might better call my witness, Mr. Otovic, to answer that question if I could. Mr. Otovic, will it be a private scavenger picking up the garbage?
Yes, well, that's all.
And can you arrange with that scavenger a particular time of your choosing, so it's not to bother the neighbors?
Absolutely.
Do you know how often they might be picking that up?
There's, there's going to be arranged dates, we arrange these pickups with most of our properties, it's a single vendor, and it'll be arranged in a, in a way that it's not disturbed, disturbing.
I'm sure it's got to be twice, at least twice a week, is that your question?
At most likely Mondays and Fridays.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of the witnesses based on testimony given only? Come on up. I'll let this gentleman talk first, because you got the podium.
I was looking at the handout, while he was first.
Say your name again, please. She lists you down.
Is there a shot in the front of the building again?
Sure.
Okay, that's good. So, my first question was actually based on previous, that's fine, one of my major concerns is noise, so that's a double door in front that opens? Is that what so, the vestibule door inside that closes?
There's a vestibule?
Is that the main entrance?
Yes, this is the main entrance.
Those are two doors, right?
Right.
Second question, can I be on? It looks to me like sixty percent of the front of the building opens in summertime?
Sixty percent is windows?
Those aren't, those don't open, because the other design looked like they opened, so is that, are they stationary, or are they closed all the time, or do they open and close? Like, is that opening to the street?
The ones to the right, the ones to the right, I actually, I showed them, to the right, to the right, go to the right.
Do those open to the street?
They do.
They do, do the ones to the left open to the street also?
Yes.
So you'll have a hundred and sixty possible people in there, and that will be seventy percent open to the street.
I can answer the doors are, can open, and the, I'm sorry, the glass can open.
Okay, I have one last question?
Go ahead.
Based on his testimony, is that okay? You said you were going to arrange with the neighborhood, the neighbors who picked up, wouldn't disturb us, how are you going to plan to do that?
It's going to be based on the hours, I mean, I can take a survey from all the neighbors around, not to be disturbed, but like I said, the area in the back of the building has about, I would say it's ten by twenty, where a truck can back up and pick up without having to, and it's, like I said, it's an area that can be used without disturbing the street.
I'm sorry, you said you were going to make sure to don't disturb the neighbors, I was just curious how you were going to do that? Like, do you know what to do?
How does the garbage get picked up now?
Well, I think we intend to do it.
No, I'm just asking him, how does this garbage get picked up now?
Well, the city never said they were going to ask me what to pick it up, so.
I'm asking.
It comes anytime in the morning.
So you're willing to, which best, best for, I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't know any garbage hauler, that's quite, city or.
I just want to what he said, that's all.
No, I'm just responding, I don't know any garbage hauler, in order to respect, that's.
Yeah, I think, well, here's what I would say to end this nonsense, he would just pick up the garbage at the same time that the town picks up the garbage.
Well, I think personally, I like the idea, but I'm working with these guys, is I'd rather have it at this time in the morning, or in the afternoon, or in the night, what?
I agree a hundred percent, if the pickup time is best, say in the middle of the day when everybody's at work, it looks less disturbing than, say, four o'clock in the morning, or five o'clock in the morning?
Do that, to help them out?
No, 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 not four o'clock, I don't say. And we would accept the condition that, should this be approved, that the refuse pickup would not be before eight AM or something along those lines? That's, that's reasonable.
And that would minimize disturbance, because you're never going to.
That's the button.
Yes, exactly. It'll be disturbance in.
Absolutely, I agree. I don't mean to testify, but if you saw the location where this is going to be, really shouldn't bother anybody, it's tucked in there. No testimony, no testimony, he's not testimony, he's only an attorney.
I didn't mean anything negative.
He's only an attorney.
We'll do whatever you want.
We don't listen to him, we only listen, we only listen to people who testify.
I don't give a listen to my taxpayer dollars, that's all I.
Okay. We don't listen to him.
Yes, sorry.
Name an address, please.
R E C I N O S, Regina's. Going back to the architectural design, how high are you planning to have the venting of the kitchen to be placed? Um, that's going to be, it's going to.
Why I'm asking this is because the existing venting is on the side, and when the prime business kitchen was opening, we were getting a lot of fumes coming back into the residential area that were definitely bothering, especially when they have some type of Filipino food, so you guys can imagine how smelling it was.
Well, the testimony is it's American food, right?
Well, this doesn't matter, right, so, so definitely, if, if this application is approved, we would like to see the venting to be displayed probably as high as a Chinese restaurant on the靠近street, which is all the way in the top. That way we don't get any of the fumes coming back into the residential area.
You're right, the, the, the building code dictates the distance from the property lines and the height, the building thickness.
All what I'm saying is just make sure that we don't get any fumes coming into the residential side, they have to be way up there, because you don't want to be getting all that kind of stuff inside.
Yes, sir. Any other, yes, sir, come on up, name an address, please.
Manual, M A N U L, D O N O, four twenty-one D whatever. My concern is, you're saying the garbage is going to be picked up two times a week?
Let my client answer a question, I, I didn't answer probably last time.
That's okay, we don't want to get you in trouble.
From, from my experience, it's been, from what I've seen, the best time to pick up is, say, on Monday after the weekend, so you have the Friday tenant pickup on Thursday or Friday, which is the most feasible way, but once again, it's going to be based on operations and demand, it's hard for me to say at this point that, you know, if, if a third pickup is needed, it might be, we really don't know, we can't dictate what's the future's going to hold, but two times is going to be experienced for the past twenty years.
Okay, that's my question, because as we all know, when you have parties over your house, you generate a lot of garbage, and two times a week is a little sparse. And you're only talking maybe ten or fifteen people at your house, now you're talking a hundred and twenty people.
Absolutely.
And it'll sit there and, and be rancid, especially in the summertime.
Like I said, if Monday, Wednesday, and Friday eliminates the problem, then so be it, it'll be something that will have to be looked at as far as what's needed on the basis, I'm sure. As I said, if, if the business thrives that well.
I hope so.
I hope it does, then I am happy to pick up the trash five days a week.
Okay.
It's personal.
Understood, thank you.
Oh, well, any other people have a question? Mr. Harretts?
I'm just, I'm just wondering what the secondary bar was going to be used for?
Drinks.
You already mentioned, you already mentioned the one bar, there's, there's a second bar in the, in the business.
There, there is a smaller bar, the second bar, because this is going to be a, a sports bar with plenty of TVs and obviously attracting an American bar grill restaurant for sports. We intend to utilize the second bar on, on nights that are the busiest, precisely maybe Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, or Sunday. Sunday football is anticipated to be a big day, so that's why we're coming to use, other than that, we anticipate on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, which are known in business as the slow days, to have that second, that entire half of the restaurant kind of closed off, not closed off, but not really utilized as much, and just utilize one part of the bar, because we don't anticipate.
Even with Monday night or Thursday night football?
Well, Monday night we anticipate, so, but we don't expect Tuesday and Wednesday to be a little slower than, say, a Friday or Saturday or Sunday. So, once again, really, operations always, always determine what the best course is, I can say a lot of things right now, but.
It adjusts.
It adjusts, and if the Super Bowl's great.
Yes. Any other questions by members of the public? Yes, come on up, give your name and address, you have to give your name again, even though you gave it first, it tells where to put you on the.
Luz Rueta, L U Z, last name R U E T A, sixteen Agnes Street, I hate to miss. I, I just really want to make some statements right now.
No statements.
Oh, okay.
That's the end.
Disqualified.
So, I'm just wondering.
You can only ask them questions based upon their testimony, you'll be a chance to give you a statement.
Okay.
And then Mr. Gashioka cross-examine you, have fun. But right now, we're only dealing with the witnesses, questions about testimony they directly give.
Well, right now, I guess my biggest question right now is the parking, that lot that he says, the mechanic's lot, is always full, right now, it's full. So I just don't understand how they expect to fit twenty cars, much less any more cars in there, unless he empties out all the carts that he's repairing and all that, I mean, there's no way.
Obviously, Mr. Otovic prepared to answer that question.
Okay, I am, I guess when, when it comes to everything else, it's a, it's a monetary issue, always, money always costs, and a certain amount of money thrown at a problem always fixes it, so we've ranked the owner of that lot to have full access to it, and obviously, that's something that we probably pay for.
I have a question, so what happens if that doesn't happen, what are my, what is our recourse? Like, what do we do when the parking lot is full of, of cars being repaired and, and all, you know?
Well, a nice parking lot at five twenty-four, Indian Avenue.
Where is that?
That's huge, without a waste.
That's actually one of the, one of the parking lots. We are working, we are working at different venues, in different parking lots, in case the demand is great, where we can alleviate from that lot to other lots. I can say from personally, which is something that's going to take a long future, we have future developments in the area, and we anticipate additional parking just for that, for our, for that are owned and operated by our square rental.
Excellent question. Based on the parking spaces testimony again, right, we're talking about utilizing the mechanical space on the street. In the past, we have seen a lot of incidents.
That's testimony.
Based on his testimony.
No, that, that's your testimony.
No, that, that's your testimony. The incident is about, about.
Are we also talking about increasing the parking facilities to the Mr. Pomacross parking lot, which usually gets packed also when the prime restaurant was upgrading?
Well, we have no lease. We know.
Are you going to testify?
No, but he's asking me a question. I mean, we know people park there. And we've never chased them.
And you've never chased them?
Nope.
Okay.
That's the way you make enemies.
Reason why I'm asking is.
So that means if I go somewhere in that neighborhood, I can park that lot.
Funeral parlor, patrons parking my lot, or.
Okay, now I don't have permission.
But I've never chased anybody.
So nobody could tell my car, wherever he goes.
We have incidents in the past.
Well, you could testify to the incidents later, okay? There was somebody else who wanted to ask a question. Come on up.
I have a call here from three three one Graylock Parkway. I haven't heard anything about security, or there's property.
That wasn't testified to. That's got to be testified to later. Or, or you can bring it up later and then they'll have to testify to it. All right, okay. Yes, ma'am, come on up. I want to try and get this thing real quick.
Sydney Pader, A W B, five thirty. It's in regards to parking. You said it was going to be valet parking, not self-parking, correct?
Valet parking.
Okay, so they're going to be charging the customers to park across the street. I mean, you're going to have cones, or how is it going to be aligned? Because I'm just curious as to, usually with valet parking, there's cones, there's someone outside, so there's going to be double parking. Like, how is this going to be aligned within, is it going to be the inner street? Is it going to be the main street?
The way, the way we foresee it is once you're able to make that turn, navigate into the lot to get in, there will be a person who's going to be there with, a valet person who can be able to take the keys, give you a car, a number, let you think see your vehicle. And at that point, it'll be parked by the valet people, not the individual patrons. And we actually anticipate Uber to be a big factor when it comes to bars, restaurants, because it's just a big part of today.
Okay, so for the valet, the staff is going to be on the lot?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, the main road, the union ass, if not actually completely, is it actually directly across? Like, because if you have customers coming in, they're driving, I feel like there's going to be a lot of U-turns happening to get back into that lot. They may miss it. It just doesn't look like an, you know, where the lot is. It just looks a little bit confusing. So, that's why I'm asking about where valet is going to be. They may pull up in front of the restaurant and then be instructed, you need to go across the street. Most people aren't going to drive around the entire block to get across the street.
I honestly can't testify to what someone's going to do in the future. I mean, you can't. We're going to try and make every provision possible to inform guests that arrive the first time or come in for the first time, that there is a lot, there is valet, there are options. And we're hoping that that would be sufficient. I mean, it could be signs, it could be a lot of different ways of communicating to the patronage that there is valet parking. Of course, it's going to be something that we're also going to see how it works and plays out in order to make the best communication possible.
I heard one twenty-six for seating, and then I heard one sixty, that's the maximum occupancy for both the restaurant, once it's merged? I just want to clarify.
No, no, no. Basically, when we calculate for egress, for, for, for emergency exiting, it's based on the square footage of the space. And, and it doesn't necessarily reflect what's going to actually be there. We just, we just do that for the purposes of calculating for the life, the, the fire safety of the building. Also, for, we're, we're required to provide a certain number of plumbing fixtures for the patrons, and that's based on the occupancy based on the square footage.
Okay, so then, what is the maximum occupancy? You said seating, is that restaurant eating with tables for one twenty-six excluding the bar?
I would actually, let's keep that.
Yeah.
It will be, yeah, the architect said it'd be maximum people that can be in there would be one sixty.
So the maximum is one sixty, including the bar and restaurant? Okay.
Yeah, but I go through the column. I think your question was, is it one twenty-six plus one sixty?
Either one, is it, is it, so I just want to kind of get an idea of the volume of people that, you know, via fire code safety, how much people can occupy that? Because obviously, for business, you're going to want more people.
If, if it gets to that point where it's one sixty, obviously, it'll be great for business, but.
But one sixty is your max?
Yeah, I believe by the architect, but again, that will all be for the fire code.
Okay.
It's dictated by code. When they come in for building permits.
Yeah.
It'll be dictated times. So that's not dictated, yes?
No, no, the board has no power over that.
Okay.
That's probably a rough, it's very accurate.
I know, you've probably seen this before, where they have places not to exceed a certain number of people.
Yes.
Right. So we're, we're going to be mandated by code to provide, this is an assembly place. It's called an assembly because a lot, a large group of people assemble in this space. So, we're limited as to the number of people that are, you know, it's a fire code requirement.
And in regards to the bar and restaurant, just to get an idea of what you guys are envisioning, what kind of, I know you said American cuisine, that kind of, is it fine dining? Is it, you know, what, what exactly is it, you know, sports bar?
It's not fine dining, it's, it's upscale American corporate food. So you're going to have a variety of burgers, and we will have wings, we will have entree dishes, we will have stratas, main courses, desserts, and, and specials obviously in certain months.
Okay, so we're extending hours, I'm sorry, we're extending hours into two AM. So, when you're looking at entertainment, I know the question was asked about live entertainment, which we're not sure about right now, we're not planning on it.
We're not planning on it.
How about a DJ?
Yes, well, maybe on the Fridays and Saturday nights, and then we can have this a normal portion.
I mean, there is noise, I guess, control and code for that, isn't there?
Yeah, well, we define the code that the windows are to be very elegant, so we wouldn't be, it's not allowed in the middle of the street. No, no, the speakers, next to the street either. If I may, because the owner of the real estate property, I have two tenants who are eventually going to occupy the two spaces, so everything's going to be soundproof and fire-rated in order to not disturb that part of my business. So, of course, we're going to take every precaution necessary to make this feasible, because otherwise, my business wouldn't exist.
And just to clarify, how long were you the owner of the property?
For the past year.
A year. So, the bar that was previously occupied, I mean, the bar that was currently there, you purchased the liquor license from that owner?
Yes.
And is that owner going to be a part of this business at all?
No, he sold the real estate and the liquor license.
And the liquor license too, okay. And are you going to be, you're the owner of the property, but are you also going to be running that business as well?
He's going to be running the business. I run the real estate part.
Yes, ma'am.
Anna Collier from three three one Graylock Parkway. With the outcome, would be so many people, a hundred and sixty people expected for this bar and restaurant, and with, where would the employees be parking? Especially to, to attend so many people.
So, at this point, I guess the best answer I have for you is the lot that we have. Obviously, the lots that we're trying to utilize and make other deals with other areas, including some of the attorneys close by. At the same time, I happen to own three properties just a block away, five seventy, five seventy-six, and twenty-one Campbell, which can be utilized, and that is intended to be a future development with parking designated for the bar restaurant.
Yeah, but I still don't see how you can accommodate the customers and the, and the employees with the, with the, with the lot across the street right now.
Right, so I, I currently come to Babel every day, and it's one of my favorite places to go to, the Soul of the Mia, which has zero parking, zero lot.
Zero customers that live down the street?
That's right.
No one lives on Cleveland Street?
That's commercial.
No commercial.
No testimony, don't walk.
And we, so we try to provide the lot, try to make additional deals with additional properties to provide additional parking and valet. Aside from that, I really don't have any other answers as far as what I can provide physically, because that's just what I can get.
As part of this, as part of this, how many employees do you expect to be working here for a lot?
Six to ten.
Six to ten, okay. Yes, sir. No, you first, you're closer.
Okay, go with five forty-three, you know?
That's what's going to happen, you.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, because before you said eight to twelve, now you're saying six to ten, you're saying you're parking in the lot across the street, which by the way is on the next block, just so you know, not across the street. How many employees?
Like I said, obviously, Fridays, Saturdays are going to be a little busier, and if the new V, we could, we possibly could go to twelve employees. It could possibly be eight. I really don't know what business it's going to be, to be honest. I've seen, you know, one of the reasons why we purchased this property very cheap is because of, you know, business around the area.
Because the prior place was a dump, that's why you bought it cheap.
Can I just say this, I, I would be surprised if you went to that, because judging off my previous experience with restaurants, ten is the most you nearly got. And I can nearly.
And no parking in that lot that you have twenty cars for?
We're not saying that they're going to be parked there, there's other properties.
So the parking on the street.
One at a time, please.
You're actually just putting words in.
Yes, no testimony.
I can't help it, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, otherwise you're going to have to leave. Can't interrupt the meeting. Go ahead, sir, come on up.
One quick question, Charles Rushman, R U I C H M A, fifty-nine. How many square feet in the restaurant?
I can answer that. Two thousand seven hundred square feet.
Two thousand seven hundred.
And two hundred fifty square feet of that is about me. Three hundred fifty square feet of that is kitchen. You never have to ask me, I can answer if you have.
Yes, sir. Last, final question, Anna. Based on additional lot for parking.
I'm, your name again?
One to Lucino seventeen Agnes Street. Based on additional facilities for parking, are you guys looking or expecting to have some security on site to prevent?
Sorry, we said that would be discussed later.
They can answer that if that's.
Want to answer that now?
Yeah.
Why don't you answer the question about security?
Yes, we really be employing a security.
Would you explain you'll have cameras and?
Well, we have, we have cameras, minimum of sixteen cameras for the exterior and interior of the premises. We will also employ a security company for, for outside and inside.
How many security guards?
Again, it'll be on operational leaves, but I would envisage probably three on a Friday and Saturday. If, if need more, I would certainly put on more.
Also, I have the facilities as well?
I'll have one, a guy outside, yeah, yeah, checking all the details on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Anna Collier from three three one Graylock Parkway. The security, is this included with the twelve employees, or this is outside the twelve employees? The, the security guards, is this included with the twelve employees?
Just now, Jack, the witness said ten employees. He clarified that a couple of times. He said he may go up to twelve.
Yes.
He did say that. I heard it three times.
One gentleman said twelve, one said ten. The man with the experience said ten.
Mr. Gashiya. I would say so, yes.
So that's included with the security, the technical?
Yeah. Because at that time, at that time, the kitchen staff would be closed down, so they're going to be gone.
But how would you mourn?
I wouldn't have security on the lawn.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm already clear, five, five forty-eight, you know. Now, the proposal is going to be restaurant and bar. Now, what happens, just, I'm curious, let's say the restaurant business doesn't go well, and the bar is going well. Based on the variance, now, since they're, it's now restaurant and bar, is it proposed now that there is suddenly a more of a sports bar than a restaurant?
It is a sports bar.
Done in the moment.
But I'm concerned again about the number of people coming in here, taking.
Ma'am, let's put it this way, the most that's ever going to be there is one sixty. If not, it's going to be less. So if it doesn't work out, you're going to have less people there. You should be happy.
I'm, I'm happy.
Okay?
I, I'm a little concerned.
What I'm saying, nothing is going to change, there's nothing to get confused about. The most is going to be is one sixty. If business doesn't work out, the business isn't busy, there's going to be less than one sixty. At the busiest time, the most is going to be is one sixty. So, don't worry about if this is good or that's good, they'll work it as, as well as it's being used. If people want to sit at the bar, they're going to sit at the bar. If people want to sit and eat, they sit and eat. It's that simple. Stop making it complicated.
I'm sorry, but for me, it was complicated, like I said, I was.
Well, it's, it's their business, they're the ones supposed to deal with the complications. But the thing is, nothing is going to be.
It's the outside, it's the outside that I got to deal with.
But with the outside, the most you're going to have is a hundred and sixty people there, period. So think about a hundred and sixty people, and then there's nothing else to worry about.
With the one part of the lot, again, I, I, with the.
Well, they also said, and this makes sense because I'm familiar with this, a lot of people who like to drink, they do use Uber because they don't want to get caught with a DWI.
Then there are those who don't.
Well, then they'll get caught with a DWI.
I, I've had a car parked in my, my yard, I've caught a car.
Exactly. What, what I'm trying to say to you is.
You're taking testimony.
So.
Well, I don't want to hear any more testimony by anybody. Anybody who wants to give testimony, I'm going to shoot them right down, because we have a limited amount of time to get this case out of way, and I'm not going to waste it on nonsense, okay?
No.
And that's simple, because you can bring this stuff up when we're going to get, like you testify. When you testify, you can bring all this stuff up. This stuff is not, it's only based on questions, on testimony given. Later on, you're going to be able to get up, give all the testimony you want, and then Mr. Exa, you could be asked questions by us, you could be asked questions by Mr. Gashiya, and it's going to be that simple. So to talk about hypothetical stuff now is ridiculous. That's hypothetical. The question you had was hypothetical. What if this don't work, what if that don't? Bring it up later when you want to give testimony, okay? And that way, we'll get this case done much more quicker.
Thanks.
Thank you.
To get through the record, I'm still concerned about the parking lot, is all you.
And you'll testify to that, I'm sure, when you get up, okay? Is there any other people who have questions of the testimony given? Not repetitive, please. Thank you. Sir, you've been up five times already.
Why don't we current a full office of information on the previous.
Come on up, you got to come, stop, stop, you got to come up, I can't hear you from back there. Thank you.
Just, what were the previous eight hours approved to operate for the previous?
We don't care about that. Thank you. Next. Anybody else? No. You may call your next witness.
Mr. Marucci.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir, when you get settled? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Anthony Marucci, M A R U C C I.
You've, you've been here.
Before, numerous times.
A few times.
What is he being used as, Mr. Gashiya?
He is being presented as a planner, but he will be, I want to qualify him both as an engineer and a planner.
Okay, and you have licenses for both?
Yes, I do.
And it's still in, in effect?
Yes, they are.
Then we'll accept you as an expert since you've been here so many times.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I, I am going to have questions. I was first ready to ask the questions with regard to qualifications. Mr. Marucci, are you filled with architectural plans? Yes, I am. And would you, I know it's been described, but as an engineer, just briefly describe the existing site. If I may, I have a photo board that I'd like to refer to, and I have some smaller copies for board members.
What are we going to mark?
What are we marked is A three.
Three.
For identification.
And Mr. Marucci, when were these pictures taken, who took them?
I took the photographs on Saturday, March sixteen.
Oh, so it's.
They're perfect.
All right. Eighty-three, that'll be both the board and the smaller versions.
Mr. Marucci, with the.
Mr. Marucci, with the benefit of the photographs, would you describe the existing site and the area surrounding the site?
The existing site, as, as was described by the architect, is on the northeast corner of Union Avenue and Agnes Street. You can see the front of the building on photograph number one. You can see the side and the front on photograph number three. And you can see the parking area behind the building on photograph number four. It's a two-story building. The first floor is commercial. At the present time, there's a dividing wall, so it's, it's split into two commercial units, and the upstairs has two residential apartments.
And I believe there was some testimony by the applicant that they were going to improve the parking lot. Would you review the proposed changes to the parking area?
The parking lot, I've inspected it, it is in disrepair. I also read Mr. Harris's report where he agrees that it's in disre, disrepair. So the parking lot will be repaired, resurfaced, and, and also, that's also the area where the refuse container will be screened off also. So, not only that, but it'll also be, be lit, there is no lighting at the present time.
And you touched on lighting, why don't you discuss the light, the lighting for the site, then?
Well, the lighting for the site, number one, is to light that parking lot for the residential tenants. The parking area, it's a driveway, and it can accommodate four cars, two in tandem for, for each side, and that would be strictly for the residential apartments. And lighting would be fixed to the building for the, the tenants of, of the second floor. Along the building, um, if you look at photograph number two, photograph number two is the adjacent property to the north, which is the daycare childcare center, and that was redone with brick and a lot of windows, finessuration. And you saw the architect's, uh, front elevation, which is proposed to do the same, to keep that same streetscape, so it would be a, a very good improvement to the, to the streetscape of Union Avenue, to the, and to the subject property, um, much better than the way it looks today. And as far as lighting goes, they're gonna keep the lighting subtle along that frontage with just some sconces to, for the, for the public, for the walkways.
And will they flatten out that front and make it look much more attractive?
Absolutely, yes.
Now, you talked about the parking area, is there room in addition to the space for the four vehicles for the residential tenants? Is there also room for the garbage area and loading and unloading?
There is room for the garbage area because that is on the side of the building, it does not interfere with the four parking spaces. The four parking spaces will be to the rear of the property, again, strictly for the residential apartments. And then behind those four parking spaces, that part of the driveway will be used by delivery trucks. The maximum delivery truck is gonna be a box truck, there won't be anything larger than that for the use of the restaurant.
It's already been discussed, but would you review the application?
The application, I, I know there's been some discussion about parking and about the use. In Mr. Di Lorenzo's report, he actually states that this site has been used as a restaurant, it received zoning board approval in nineteen eighty-six. Yes, it's been vacant for a while now, but the use goes with the land. Restaurant, Tavern Restaurant goes back to nineteen eighty-six, we're talking over thirty years. There was no parking then either. In my opinion, if they wanted to open the restaurant without expanding into the other unit, they could do that without coming before the board.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When, when a non-conforming use expands, doesn't it have to come before the board?
Yes, I said, if they were not expanded...
Well, they are doing it.
I, I've, I'm trying to explain that the parking that was required for the former restaurants was already part of the variance.
I understand that, but now there's additional use.
And, and that's why we're here, we're here for the expansion...
And that's why there's additional parking, they weren't adding enough. All right, Stuart, right, but they are.
Yes.
So just worry about it being added on.
That's why we're here.
Right.
Mr. Marucci, what is the zoning at the site?
The zoning is BA, which is retail mixed use.
And what's generally permitted in that area?
What's, what's permitted is retail, actually what's permitted are single-family, two-family, neighborhood retail, business professional offices, and mixed use with commercial on the ground floor and residential above.
And does this zone have mainly conforming structures, or is there a potpourri of structures in this area?
In my opinion, I'll use your word, there's a potpourri of, of different uses. To the north, again, we have two childcare centers. To the south, it is like a strip mall with a hair, hair salon, a Chinese restaurant. There's some residential across the street, there's the auto repair shop, so there's a mixture of uses.
And there's been lots of discussion with regard to parking. Would you review the proposed parking?
With respect to parking, again, the residential portion of the site will have sufficient parking on-site. The Tavern Restaurant is gonna have parking off-site, as the owner described, he has a lease with the auto repair center across the street, with twenty parking spaces, valet type. In addition to that, in my opinion, this, if this application were approved, I see this as a, a local restaurant, a local tavern, where I believe you're gonna get walk-in customers also from the neighborhood, from the area. But it was, what was also brought out by the applicant, and I agree with, is the fact that with liquor licenses today, with, with the laws regarding DWI, I believe a lot of people will use Uber. I think it's common, and it's necessary also. If anybody's gonna go out for a period of time, your best bet is to use, is the Uber.
In addition to that, is there parking available on the street?
There is street parking on Union Avenue, till closing.
And are there some bulk variances in conjunction with this application that are pre-existing?
Besides the, the use, the D two expansion of non-conform use variances and the parking variances, there are existing conditions. If I go into Mr. Harris's report, there were, the lot depth requires a hundred feet, we have ninety-seven point seven nine, that's an existing condition that cannot change. There's no way to buy any more land, everything's developed. Maximum lot coverage required is fifty percent, and we're at sixty-one percent, which again, it's, it's a, it's a developed site. And parking five feet off the property line, we're at four point six seven. In my opinion, that's the minimus, we're just four inches off on that. The curb cut requirement is twenty feet, we're at twenty-two point six seven, which again is existing, and in my opinion, I think it should stay that way, again, because of the delivery trucks that make sure they have enough room to, to back in, into that driveway.
Now, in addition to the bulk variances, is there also a D two or expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, or expansion of a use that's there by variance?
Yes.
And can you review why, in your opinion, you think that D two can be approved by the board?
As the architect stated, and I've also stated, there are going, there is going to be a lot of aesthetic improvement to the exterior of this property, both to the building, to the parking area, to the sidewalks. One of the purposes of the municipal land use law is to promote a desirable visual impact. And I believe that if this application is approved, that that purpose of the municipal land use law won't be promoted, and so I believe that's the part of the positive criteria.
And have you reviewed the negative criteria?
With respect to the negative criteria, there has to be no substantial detriment to the public good. Again, with the visual, with the visual improvement that will enhance the area, I believe that's favorable to the public, it's favorable to the neighborhood, it's favorable to the town. So in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. The second part of that is there's substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance of the zone plan. Again, the Tavern Restaurant was approved by variance in nineteen eighty-six, the use goes with the land. So in my opinion, the, the, there is no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
And with regard to the aesthetic improvement, is there a decorative barrier that will improve the view in the back going around the dumpster?
Yes, there's going to be a PVC pipe fence that will surround the refuse area so that it would be protected both visually and also protected from any kind of animal disturbance of the garbage area.
And will there be an integration of a building with the brick and glass that makes it more consistent with the other structures on the street?
Absolutely, that's why I showed the, the daycare center that's to the north of us, and I think it'll blend right in with that same type of brick and glass improvement.
The, right there. Did you get an opportunity to review the report of Mr. Harris and the report of Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any comments with regard to those reports?
With respect to Mr. Di Lorenzo's report, he commented on that the board must review such items, well, first of all, the same variances that I just referred to before, the existing non-conformities, and then he commented on paving, lighting, buffering, et cetera, which we already spoke about, hours of operation, the dumpster, these are all things we've spoken about. With respect to Mr. Harris's report, he had a number of comments, and if I go through them one by one, the first was about the number of employees and hours of operation, which has already been addressed. Number two is regarding outside dining, which has already been addressed. Number three was the bending of the kitchen, which was addressed. Number four is parking, which was addressed. Number five is deliveries, which was addressed. And number six was regarding the five-foot buffer and the parking area, that was also addressed. Number seven, he recommends that we replace any sidewalk in poor condition, and absolutely, this is gonna be a place of public accommodation, and we wanna make sure that all the sidewalks are in good shape. Number eight, there really is no landscaping on this site because of its, the fact it's already impervious and, and all the way around, but the lighting has been addressed. Number nine, the architectural treatment to the building has been addressed, signage has been addressed, and the ADA standards have been addressed.
So then we've addressed all the comments in Mr. Di Lorenzo and Mr. Harris's letters.
Yes.
Have no further questions, it is witness.
Any questions by members of the board who are with us?
I do. Mr. Marucci, could I just draw your attention to photograph number four, the rear parking lot?
Yes.
Excuse me. Previous testimony has been that there's going to be tandem parking, two columns of two cars. If I'm reading Mr. Di Lorenzo's report correctly, the, the width of that rear parking lot is twenty-two point five nine feet. So if you have two rows of cars, and you allow a minimum of eight feet, that's sixteen feet. So that would only leave you a little over six feet in the, in the rear parking lot. So how are you going to be able to bring in delivery trucks or a, a garbage truck to remove the dumpster if you have, if there should be four cars parked back there?
No dumpsters. He said no dumpsters.
If you look at...
Right, there's a dumpster.
If you look at the architect's site plan, you'll see the four parking spaces laid out in the, in the bottom left-hand corner. There are two spaces side by side, and then two spaces behind. The dumpster, not dumpster, the refuse area is in the front, is in the front, on the side right next to the building, that does not interfere with those parking spaces.
You mean to the left of paragraph four, on the list of pictures, sir?
Yes, yes. And then the, and then the delivery truck has enough space to back up without interfering with those parking spaces.
A question came up, in your list of pictures, what is picture number five?
That's a photograph of the parking area to the north of Mr. Gassillon's building. There was this, there was some discussion, a discussion about that, but I defer...
I know, because we're up here, we're all looking, and saying, where is this? So, that's why I brought it up.
That's what it is.
Okay. All right, we answered, we answered that question. Any other questions by members of the board? No? No? Now, let me explain something, this is a planner, this is not a person, he just goes based upon the area and about the zoning laws. So, anyone who wants to ask questions, you can ask him questions on testimony given, but he gives highly specialized testimony, which is required before his board, okay? But anybody who wants to ask a question, I have no problem, as long as it's based on testimony. After that, we will probably take a little recess, and then I will let any members of the public, I believe this is your last witness?
It is, sir. It is, as I plan it right now, there's always a possibility of rebuttal witness, but right now, this is the last witness I plan to present.
Okay, you mean a rebuttal witness after testimony's given from the public?
There's always that possibility.
Okay. All right, we will have like a, a, a small recess after you're done asking him questions based upon his testimony, and then I will take testimony from members of the public. However, you will be given testimony only once, all right? So any questions you have, get all your questions together to ask them just once, okay? It'll be no repetitive, all right? Thank you very much. Go ahead, anybody who has a question of the guy based upon his witness, let's test one. Yes, sir, come on up.
Two questions, actually. I'm sorry, Dave Copeland, forty-three, yeah? First question was, I'm not familiar with the size of a box truck, I'm sorry, how big is a box truck? Can you refer to me something that makes me aware, because I know the size of liquor, liquor delivery trucks.
It would have, it would have just the, a regular, a regular one axle, in other words, a box truck, a refrigerator box truck that's gonna bring deliveries of either food or, or...
In other words, it's not a tractor-trail.
So I've seen liquor delivery trucks in front of bars all the time, they would not qualify as a box truck, is that a fair statement?
I'll defer to the owner on that.
A beer delivery truck?
I mean, for, for the large companies like Budweiser, some of them do, but for local neighborhoods, they tend to go with box trucks because it's easier to maneuver around.
So it's fair to say there would be some deliveries made outside of that area in the back?
Sorry, say it again?
I said, it's fair to say, then, that some of those larger trucks made by the larger companies like you sell Budweiser? Budweiser's not coming in a box truck.
Majority of the time, for, for towns, they will send the box trucks in to the locals of the city, where they have multiple stops, they will send the big units. But for this area, I, I might, me personally, I haven't seen one of the large ones. I don't know if you have, or if you have seen them previously.
Second question is, I've heard a lot talked about variance in nineteen eighty-six, does a nineteen, does a thirty-three-year-old variance really hold any water here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wasn't aware, thank you. Does it, well, I'm sorry, one more, does it take into account changes that have been made in the last thirty-three years?
No.
No.
Stays with the land.
Stays with the land.
Right, so the fact that...
In perpetuity.
So, for example, the building next to us has been built up to match...
The question is, it stays with the land.
In perpetuity. Any other questions? Of testimony given, ma'am?
Yeah, no, this is about some, some...
Name it, Anna, please.
Thank Catherine Street. My concern was, are they gonna be open while, while the daycare is open? At the same time, they be drinking and the kids, uh, next door?
If I may, having spoken to both the owner of the daycare center and the owner of the property, one of the reasons why I testified that we'd like to open at four, four-thirty, is to avoid that part in being neighborly and trying to work with everybody in the block.
But after that, you said that you might be open to open at eleven?
Absolutely, it's an option that we're not exploring at this point. So what we're saying is, to open, we will open from four to ten, and of course, having multiple conversations with the owner and the establishment, that's one of the reasons why we took the four instead of the twelve, because we wanted to be neighborly.
Okay, what will happen if, when you start opening at eleven? Is that... Is that against?
That's why we're planning, and the plan is right now, to open at four and only on Saturdays and Sundays, open at twelve.
Okay, but my point is, when you get to open from 11 during the week, when the kids are right there?
But he's saying he doesn't know if he's ever going to do that.
Well, we don't know.
He does not want to be foreclosed forever, but at this time, he's planning on going from four to two.
I understand.
And that's interjecting, but usually daycares, they bring the kids early in the morning. At that time, when they bring the kids, he will be closed no matter what.
But they close, this daycare closes at 6:00, 6:30 in the afternoon.
I understand that.
That's the latest time they can pick up the kids.
I understand that, but at that time, they'll just be opening, or it'll be the beginning of the evening. Sports bars don't get busy until usually the evening.
That's my concern.
And to be honest, it's one of those concerns that we took upon from day one, speaking to the daycare. It's one of those conversations that we have with the daycare, day one, in order to be courteous to both parties. He's got a business to run, we have a business to run, but we do not want to compete in his business.
That was one of the concerns I had too, about the overlap of the two businesses, the bar and the daycare center. Today, I broke by at 6 o'clock, and there were parents going in and out of the daycare center, so they're obviously running well beyond 3, 4 p.m.
Yes, man, come on up.
Are we aware that it's two different daycare centers and there are two different owners?
Yes.
And you spoke to both?
Both in line, that's one of the reasons why the hours are in line, avoid that.
No one's asked a question of the last witness, yes?
Last name, K O D A R E. Sorry, I just understand you said that you spoke to me from the daycare center.
I spoke to the lady at work, sir, as well as the owner of the daycare excellent.
I'm the owner.
I apologize, I didn't speak to you, but I spoke to the person who I thought was in charge at the time, as far as establishing the hours.
I don't know, but you didn't talk to me yesterday, you talked to your own.
I'm sorry, I meant, what I said is, I spoke to both properties, including the owners of the, of the experience, and as well as the person that I thought was in charge, or the manager at those, and we actually have a text message and a phone conversation that we had with that person, which I can share with you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Okay, then we'll have a recess, we will reconvene at a quarter to nine, and I will ask questions, I will ask, ask for testimony from the public, of which the board members can ask for questions based upon your testimony, and Mr. Gassion will of course examine you if he wishes, okay? So, okay, this special meeting of the Belville Zoning Board of Adjustment for March 19th, 2019, will now come back into session, and now I will call any residents who wish to give testimony. Come on up, you can name an address, sir.
Do you raise your right hand, please?
Regarding to this matter, do you swear the comments you're about to make show you the truth, tell me God.
Help me God.
Thank you.
I'm all for the town having new business, and, you know, my, my comments come as a result of the prior owners. So I'm just looking to make sure that the mistakes that we allowed, when it was the speakeasy, that we don't do again, okay? And the speakeasy got closed, why? Because they got raided, they were loud, I had the police chief on direct dial, because after I complained so much, he called me and gave me his cell phone number. And I'm not the only one, I think there's a couple of us.
Well, that's the old chief, we now have a new chief.
Okay, so I'll get real friendly with the new chief. So my concern is this, constantly had a call, basically from Wednesday through Saturday, it was a free-for-all, in front of my house, 11 Agnes Street, they blocked my driveway, I had a call to get the car towed, they blocked the handicap across the street from my neighbor, there was drugs, there was drug deals going in front of the house, there was fights, there was property removed from my house, I have a little well in front of my house, and for some reason, some of the men thought that that was a urinal. Had my neighbor call me several times and say, somebody's watering your flowers, and yes, there were people there, and I had to call the cops. So on our block, Agnes Street, there are nine homes. Out of those nine homes, seven of us are females. If there's a brawl going out on the street, do you really think we're gonna come outside and tell them anything about it? So we feel that we're not being protected. So we're asking you, do you really reevaluate this, this business? Opening it up till 2 o'clock in the morning, I think is obsessive, it is infringing on our rights as taxpayers and as people that don't feel safe. Also, you know, if they're going to be open at 4 o'clock, the daycare center blocks all the street as it is, it's gonna be chaos. And my concern is that that parking lot across the street is not gonna accommodate, if the law offices around the corner want to give, fine. The other thing is, when the bar is let's out, there was never any security. The only security was, hello, Bellevue Police Department, and we had to keep on calling. We're paying for all these taxes to run these bar, the bar. So we ask you to really think about, again, 160 people at any football Giants, we're gonna be nuts. If it's a nice establishment, guess what, I'm gonna be there, I'm around the corner. But I am not a big fan of having them open till 2 o'clock in the morning, the noise level is outrageous, the fighting, the drugs, you name it. You all don't live on that street, so you will never experience what we experience. So I ask you to really take into consideration their hours of operation, 160 people, which might or might include their security and their staff, it's a lot, a lot of people for our small neighborhood. So I thank you for listening.
Questions by members of the board? Question, I have one question. You're discussing the bar that was there.
The previous one.
It was always a bar, correct?
It was a bar. It was a tavern.
But it wasn't a restaurant?
What, well, when I moved there, it was, they had food, they had sandwiches, hamburgers. It wasn't a restaurant, but they served food, yes.
They served, might, it's small food, like an accessory.
Chicken wings, the same stuff that they're offering, you know, is there. You know, if it's a restaurant, I'm all for it, we just need to, we need to have some order.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next person, come on up. No, let him come for us, he's close. Yo, yo, yo. Name an address, I'll get to everybody.
Dave Copeland, 543 Union Avenue.
Could you raise your right hand, please, to verify that this application, so the testimony you're about to give show the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So as a beautiful young lady here just reminded me, and my blood pressure's going up, so I'm not gonna repeat everything the woman before me just said, I think she voiced most of my concerns in my testimony. I just wanted to say this, everyone who's here saying something, or here because we live a block away or so, every one of us, I think if you guys live that close, you'd probably have a little bit of hesitation, a little more hesitation about what's going on here. It really was a nightmare for years, despite what it looks like now, I think any one of us will take it looking like that over what it was. The other major concern for me is just regardless, I invite every one of you to go down at 5 o'clock and spend an hour sitting on the street, a weekday, and see the people that are double parked, and, and parked, and people blocking driveways, and how difficult it is to pull in and out of our driveways onto Union Avenue. I live directly across the street, and constantly have to pull out their traffic on top of negotiating double parked cars.
Is that because of the picking up of the kids?
It's the daycare center.
Daycare center.
It is daycare center. And I find, personally find it hard to believe that whatever parking solution they have is gonna make that any better, it can only make it worse. So thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, come on up, sir. You can name an address, and then he has a swing.
My name's Javier Fernandez, I'm at 540 Union Avenue.
Fernandez, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give show the truth?
Thank you. So I represent the daycare center immediately to the north that was previously mentioned in the planner's testimony. I wanna go on record to say that I fully support this project. Mr. Otavick personally consulted with me and my wife, the owners of the establishment, and he gave me all the comfort that they were a different breed of investors and owners. The concerns that the residents are bringing up are absolutely valid, true, and absolutely respectful, and I think quite frankly, they've been traumatized by the previous establishment, and they had to be subjected to drugs and other disgusting things. And quite frankly, these, these gentlemen are not, this isn't your typical $2 beer establishment. They're gonna go out of their way to ensure everyone's comfort, and, and he made that 100% known to me, and I take his word for it, they're very successful. They're not, you know, the dilapidated, you know, establishment owners from the past. They are serious about being successful, and I think the number one thing is to be on the same page with the community. And I urge all of the residents to have an open mind, and to understand that property values and your home values only increase when investors like myself and him inject capital to the community and say, you know, I'm gonna beautify this place. He saw what we did at the daycare, we put a lot of money into it, brick faced, the double paint, storefront glass, and he's gonna, not mirror it, but he's gonna use that as a, kinda like as a guide to prepare that streetscape and make things look nice. Again, this isn't your appetizer, $2 bar place that, you know, that's gonna bring that kinda clientele, it's gonna bring a nice place to eat, and quite frankly, they're gonna get rid of that dilapidated dump that was, that was mentioned, and turn it into something nice and successful. And I really look forward to that. And again, the concerns are absolutely true and valid, and I think that with an open mind, it, it'll be a successful project. And I could ask every owner of properties nearby, if they want their values to go up in their home, I'm sure they could all agree, and they could say yes. And one way of doing that is projects like these and young investors like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by members? Questions by members of the board?
Fernandez, I wanted to ask you, do you all operate the child studio next door?
Yeah.
Care Center?
Yes.
What, what is the most busiest times there, when people are dropping off their kids and picking them up?
The busiest times is, I'd say 6:30, when we open up 6:30 in the morning, since the day end. That is our rush hour, that's when parents are dropping off, they're in a rush, and they wanna get to work.
What time does that normally die off at?
It dies off shortly before 9:00 a.m., I'd say 8:30 a.m.
So 8:30 a.m.?
Yeah, and the vehicles that are parked directly outside of the building are mainly staff, my staff, and then there is another daycare center right next to us, and their staff also occupy the block. And it is quiet all the way until, I say 6, 6:30, 5, when different random parents come picking up their children at that time.
What's your normal pickup of children in the afternoon, late afternoon, like what's the normal time?
Normal time?
Yeah.
Or are you busy?
They start showing up and picking up.
Right, so right after your 9:00, you know, so I'd say 5:30 or sometimes 5:00, depending on the age of the child, you know, we have infants that parents come at different hours, but it'll be 1:00 or 2:00, and usually there's always parking available for them. But the main busiest part I'd say is right after 5:00, 5:30, all the way to 6, to 6:30.
About 5:00?
Yeah.
To 6:30?
Yes.
How late are you open every day?
We close at 6:30 p.m.
6:30?
Yes.
Just Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
No Saturday, no Sunday?
No Saturday, no Sunday. And I'll be honest, in the beginning, I did have my doubts, just like the residents had their doubts. I made this a big point in training, I wanna know more, I wanna know more about them. And I raised it up to the highest level of counsel here in Belleville, and I obtained assurance that these are different people, these are not the same speakeasy people. I wanna see that fixed as soon as possible, and in time, I'm sure they'll be able to redeem themselves and prove to be, to be successful, in my opinion, that's my opinion. Anybody else have questions of this, any questions of this gentleman by Mr. Gassion? No, sir. That's it? Okay.
Should we ask questions?
Yes, public can ask questions of a witness, anyone.
I have...
Ma'am, no testimony, just based on his testimony, that's it.
Okay.
You're gonna have to... Your testimony you have to give separately.
Okay.
Put your name, please, state your...
I call you a pretty, really low parkway. And she, if, like you have said, your employees park in the, in the street, and most of them, how many employees do you have?
16 employees.
Okay, and how many childrens do you have?
Currently, we have 71 children, right licensed capacity, not all of our staff drive, a lot of them Uber, so rather not pay the insurance or have the card payment, and they simply Uber their way, like a lot of people do nowadays, they simply just don't wanna own a vehicle, so they don't all drive.
All right, so you're just one of the two daycares?
That's correct.
With 71 children and 16 employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have a question? Oh, you're over the 12.
No, get out.
Oh, yes, that's my question, yes. How many, how many cars can fit in your parking lot?
We don't have a parking lot, sir, we're, we're subjected to the same, the only thing we're guilty of is operating on a county road.
Your parking lot is my driveway, I'm not...
I beg to differ in there, but... No debating, no debating.
We're not debating.
That's it. Any other questions? No? Okay.
One other question?
What's the question? Come on up, come on up. And then while you're up, as he sits down, you can give testimony.
548 Union Avenue, do you live on, on that location that you, you have your business with?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't... That's academic, man. Makes nothing of him testify.
Because we're talking about the evening.
Well, the evening has nothing to do with his business, he's already closed in the evening. He's already closed, he's gone, he's closed, the kids are gone, academic. Any other questions?
Can I just have one quick question?
Yes.
You stated that your employees park in front of your business, right?
Those who drive, yeah, but we've, we've also expressed to them not to park there too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we make a suggestion, if your employees could park further down the road, then your customers could park there and not double park?
Absolutely.
Suggestion.
And that's a very fair, we've, we've, we've requested that too, but what we decided is, since there's a business right next door that's gonna park out there anyway, it's hard to tell our employees not...
What to do.
Yeah, exactly, you know, we've asked it, it just didn't work for that same reason, because we have an entirely different clientele, an entirely different staff next door that park right there anyway.
You thought about buying the business next door or what do you think?
I did, actually, and it didn't, it didn't work out. Okay, all right, no other questions of this gentleman? Next gentleman, come up and give testimony. Come up, give your name and address, and be sworn in, please.
My name is Frank Rosa, R O Z S A. I'm the owner of 540...
Regarding to this application, do you swear the testimony, your, your testimony will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Your last name again?
R O Z S A.
Thank you.
I am the current owner of 540 Union Avenue, since 2005, prior to Javier taking over Big Smiles, I operated Little Smiles, from 2005 through 2016. And really apparent and consistent with a lot of what the testimony I was giving today in the local area, I was subject to a lot of pain with that speakeasy being next door. I, I don't think you can really compare the speakeasy, obviously, to, obviously, the group that's coming in, because speakeasy, the cuisine that was offered was pretty much a vending machine. So when you have that and you have $2 beers, you know what kinda clientele you're gonna bring into the neighborhood. It was never driven towards a family type of establishment, and even with the other businesses there, that never really catered that local community there. But what we did was, I had a vision, I saw past that, obviously, and worked through, tried to work through with the previous owner, never got many places, but that was, we got to the point that we're at right now. Back in 2016 and 2017, there was hope, obviously, I met Michael a couple of years ago, and based on the vision of coming in and investing different properties in Belleville, looking to bring, obviously, a change to the communities, aesthetic improvement, and give a better experience to the residents that live in that community, based on his investments. I was inspired, the building that you see now, that's 540 Union Avenue, right Big Smiles, over $270,000 went to that building, outside, inside, because of past complaints that were, brought my, to my attention about the way it looked, what you brought around there. The interesting part about the parking place that a lot of the folks mentioned here... The interesting part about the parking place that a lot of the folks mentioned here, that's in front of there, if you look at the sign there, it says temporary. Okay, that's drop-in and drop-off. Bob Alessio and law enforcement, some other folks, I had their children in Little Smiles. And when he was around and they saw him pull up to drop his children off at the time, all of a sudden, you see people scattered with the cars. But when I looked at it, actually, did an analysis of the parking, folks from, not even that good building, across the street, from other apartments over there, they come in and get in their cars and just pull right out from in front of them, really a no parking zone at the time, between a certain hours there. So, maybe that's something that could be looked at, obviously, within the town. But understandably, you know, I was inspired and I made these investments. And again, I don't think anyone makes investments to lose money. What we wanna see is someone come in and bring a positive change to the communities, and bring something that it hasn't had in a long time. That's why I was inspired to invest and stay with it, obviously, in that area of Belleville, because we know there's opportunity there to really promote this town. So, you know, really based on that, again, I'd just like to, and again, obviously, the mayor inspiring the team here and what he said when he came into office about promoting a new Belleville and really bringing jobs, which we're gonna bring more jobs to the community there, and really put those things in place that are gonna safely protect a lot of those folks around the business component, which, trust me, the folks that have been at Speakeasy, security didn't exist at the place there. But back to what really inspired me was the mayor coming in and wanting to build a better Belleville, so I'm being part of, right now, looking around Belleville to really promote someplace where I spent a good part of my life, my family been involved, my children went to that childcare center, all right, we spent a lot of time in Belleville. What we wanna do is continue to have, obviously, have it grow and invest and help it develop and help it flourish, really, with the support of the community and really support of, obviously, the board and really driven by, really, the mayor's direction. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions by members of the board of the witness? Question by a member of the public, yes, ma'am?
Yes, Anna Colley, 331 Greymon Parkway. You're the other owner of the childcare?
Yes, 540, Big Smiles.
Okay. How many clients do you have?
Uh, one, he's just sitting right behind you, Javier. I am the owner, and he's a tenant, yes.
Okay. I thought you were the other childcare.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Question by Mr. Gassial?
No, sir.
Okay, then, anybody, who else wants to give testimony? Anyone else wants to give testimony? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Name and address, please, and you have to be sworn in by...
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Just state your name, please?
Anna Colley. I live 331 Greymon Parkway, and I have many problems with people parking and blocking my driveway. I called the police many times, you can go to the records, pull the record of how many times I called them, because they're blocking my driveway and I couldn't get out. The last time I called, it was December 16th. I have a picture if you wanna see.
So, what happened December 16th?
They blocked my driveway.
No, but what happened when you called the cops?
They came and they towed the truck. And then also, they towed the car. And before that, I called and they towed the other car.
Well, then these cars will learn not to park there.
Yeah. But some of the employees from the childcare also like to park in my driveway.
Well, then it's up to you to call the police on that?
Yeah, but I'm not home.
Well, ma'am, all I can tell you is what you can't do. That's all I can tell you.
Yeah, but what I'm concerned is with the parking, again.
Well, the gentleman has said he will employ people to do valet parking.
I know.
And I'm sure the valet parking people are not gonna park in your driveway or in front of your driveway.
Of course. But he only has 20 available spaces, and he also says he may have 12 employees, so there goes 12. So, you only have eight available spaces for customers, and where are they gonna park?
Well, ma'am, usually valet people bring people and park wherever they can find a parking space.
I know, but other people drive.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can, about the parking. I'll direct this to Mr. Greymon. The ordinance for parking for a restaurant, what is it?
So, according to the thing here, it's 34, on Mr. De La Renzel's report.
Is that the honest, is that the...
You wanna ask Mr. De La Renzel, it's in his report.
What's that, Rick?
The, for a restaurant?
34, no, restaurants are not allowed to park, they're okay.
They're okay, they don't need a parking lot.
Very exact, yeah. So, we're talking about the bar. 34 is for the bar itself.
Park porch, yes, because they moved the bar around, they expanded the bar, they added another bar.
So, my concern again is with the parking and the double parking on the street and the safety.
Ma'am, the double parking takes place all over the town when kids get out of the school, whether it's the public school, private school, daycare, that happens two times a day, in the morning and in the late afternoon when they get out.
But what I'm saying is, just because it happens all over the place, doesn't mean you wanna...
But ma'am, it has nothing to do with the restaurant and the bar, it has to do with the school, the daycare, has nothing to do with the bar.
Well, then there's a problem with the town, because the town is home.
That's not our problem. We're only ruling on a case involving the bar. If you wanna complain about anything like this, you go to a town meeting or to a Board of Ed meeting and complain about the parking with the schools and with the daycares, it has nothing to do with this, nothing to do with this at all.
Well, it has to do with this, because it's gonna, it's gonna make worse the parking.
Because what you're talking about has nothing to do with the bar or the restaurant, has nothing to do with it.
So, parking on somebody's driveway is not...
Ma'am, you already said you called the cops, they towed the car away.
Yeah, but the harassment that I go through...
Ma'am, I have no control over people parking, and this guy is being so nice, he's gonna hire people to do valet. Valet ain't gonna park in front of your driveway, you should be happy he's getting a valet. If he didn't get a valet, then they wouldn't maybe park in front of your driveway, or...
Yeah, so you're telling me that 100% of his customers are gonna be valet?
No, there may be other people that don't want the valet, but it's up to them. But what I'm saying to you is...
For a restaurant, they don't need a parking lot.
Right. Parking lot's not required, and I wanna explain something that hasn't come up in all the testimony, because that's a big factor here. The total amount of spaces where people will be sitting at the bar, both bars combined are only 33. Over 100 spaces where people will be sitting are at tables, where people sit to eat. So, the overwhelming majority of this business is going to be a restaurant. I'm not gonna say they're not gonna have a drink when they're eating their food, but this is traditional. And every place I've ever been like this, when it's traditionally like this, there's very few problems at all. The problems is when it's strictly a bar, strictly a bar. Then you have your biggest problems, and I'm not gonna argue with that, that's 100% correct. But when it's primarily a restaurant, these problems don't occur. That's all I can tell you. We've just approved an addition for another restaurant bar in the town, and there is never any problems there, okay? This is 10 times better of what you had before. The person who testified to that is 100% right. If this was strictly a bar, you'd be having headaches like anything. But all the headaches you mentioned are gonna probably go away with this being primarily a restaurant, okay?
If they don't?
Well, if they don't, ma'am, then you could always go to a town meeting and complain, that's all I can tell you. All right? You're welcome. Do you wish to cross-examine Mr. Gassial? Does anybody wish to ask her questions from the board? No. Anybody else in the public wish to give testimony? You wish to give testimony? You wish, yes, sir, come on. Let him, well, fair, come on. Whoever wants to come up first? No, she didn't give testimony, she asked a question. This gentleman.
Sir, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony would come and show me the truth?
Yes.
State your name, please.
Charles Reishman, R-E-I-C-H-M-A-N, 15 Hackney Street, Belleville. I have a couple of questions of the board, especially you, sir, as an attorney. I was trying...
Usually, the questions are not up to...
You're giving testimony now, you wanna give testimony?
I'll say it as testimony, and then you can ask me questions about it. I was able to find online, city of Belleville, New Jersey, ordinance is number 23, which is about zoning. The latest revision there was June 2018. I presume that's the up-to-date version.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong. It clearly says in there, prohibited uses for a VA zoning district are any retail or service consisting of two or more commercial stores or facilities on one property or adjoining properties.
Yes, that's true.
So, that's prohibited.
But that's why it's before this board, this board handles prohibited.
But I thought you...
They're seeking a use...
Another way...
Is that explained in the zoning law?
You explain.
They're, they're, they had previously received, a number of years ago, a variance for a, what has turned out to be a bar, basically. They are now seeking board approval, this board, to approve what they're proposing. We know it's prohibited, that's why they're here, that's why they just can't open up whenever they want. They have to come here and get approval, and they need five votes from this board to get approval for what they're seeking to do.
And seven.
So, we're aware it's not permitted.
That's why it's before the board.
I thought that in this law, you can pass on conditional uses, but prohibited uses too, then, you can overcome. And...
That's pretty much what we do. We deal with uses that are not permitted in the zone.
That's called deapplication, which this is.
And there was, I'm sorry, I don't have it released quickly, I couldn't find... So, what's the total square footage of just for the bar?
That was already testified.
2700 square feet, but just for the bar itself?
No, no, for the bar and the restaurant, 'cause it's all included together.
Okay, but...
And the bathroom.
But I think 500 of the square feet they testified is gonna be the kitchen.
And the bathrooms.
And the bathroom.
And it's another 200.
Yeah.
And I think the applicant had the numbers cold when he said it.
But there's supposed to be off-street parking for, you know, per every 100 square feet of bar space. And I just would like to say my opinion from living there, if I can say it, is that it's just not realistic to think there might be a massive of people parking from a VA district, which my impression from reading the zoning laws for like to moderate commercial use, this is gonna probably be, if it's successful, a much more intensive use. And this, you know, has happened with the previous bar, not only because of the rowdiness, it's just not gonna be parking for the residents, there is no resident parking permitted.
All right. I wanna, I wanna ask you a question.
Sure.
Because this is what would happen if this application was denied. If this application is denied, someone could open up the same type of bar that was there before, which requires the same, well, yes, similar, well, maybe less parking space, but still, you wanna go back to what was there before.
No.
Well, that's what you're gonna get if we say no. Because that's been approved since 1984, 85, whatever it was, doesn't matter.
My question is...
And that goes with the property, it doesn't go away.
What recourse do we have if things stated by the gentleman...
The answer that I just gave you is if this gets denied, you're gonna go exactly to the same use that was there before. Now, do you want that? If that's what you want...
No, we would, we would...
You know, because that's what'll happen, and that will only give you the same headaches you had before, nothing'll change.
But what's really...
The change is, this is gonna be primarily restaurant. I told you, I just gave the figures, only 33 spots are gonna be at both bars combined, over 120 spots are going to be sit-down spots, the people will be there to eat.
And they're obligated to keep that.
Yes. That was testimony given, okay? And the plans, they can't change the plans. These are the plans, that if they're approved, they gotta go by these plans. They can't alternate the plans without coming before the board.
I'm sorry to just bring up one other little thing.
Go ahead.
I'm afraid I can't find the note, but there's supposed to be, and it's stated in the letter sent to the homeowners, some kind of other requirement that you're passing on, which I think, well, it was what Mr. Greymon was speaking of, that's just not available online, you know, change of, I'll have to find my...
You mean the dimensional variance?
No, it's a more general, like it's a, like a site plan, I think that's what...
That's what this is, a site plan.
But there's no information about the ordinance, at least online.
Well, there's really nothing on the site, I mean, if I'm, Mr. Gassial, other than a front facade change?
That's it.
There's a trash container.
And we're fixing up the back, but there's no site plan changes.
It's, it's...
Only extension to the building. But their interior, the interior site is different changes. The part of the wall between the two businesses right now will be knocked down, but they'll still be part of it up on the interior.
But the public should be able to read about that before the hearing.
Well, ma'am, sir, when they gave you the note, anybody could've went down 10 days before this hearing, even earlier, because this was a special meeting, and gone down and looked at the plans. Anybody's allowed to go do that.
It's gonna be a brick front facade, windows, metal and glass, and a different sign, the same size, and then the trash is gonna be spruced up at the back.
And we have exactly the same plans that were presented over there.
Exhausted.
That was presented right there, you're thinking, that's the same plans that we have before us, no different. Okay? You're welcome, sir. Any questions of the gentleman?
No, sir.
Anybody else wanted to give testimony? Yes, ma'am?
Could you raise your right hand, please, and keep your voice up if you would? With regard to this application, do you swear your testimony will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pretty much my concern, my concern is repetitive of what we had before. I understand what I thought, that it's not going to be. Unfortunately, I'm not too optimistic of it, because I had plans that I had in front of my property. I had to remove, because like we do before, we use the urinal, recycling container, and other stuff. My driveway, I had people come there, using my yard as a urinal. I actually had to call the cops to remove a car, I woke up one Sunday morning, I find a car parked in my backyard.
In your backyard?
Yes. And you can check with the authorities, they'll tell you that. When I called, I gave them the number plate, and they called the person, and the person said they were too drunk to drive over. But they drove into my yard, they could've hit, they could've hit something, they could damage something. And I don't want that to happen again.
I don't, maybe they thought that was their home.
That's my point, I don't want any...
Well, that happened to me one time, I don't have my car on the street, so... Go ahead.
Yeah. So, my concern again is also the security that they mentioned, is it only gonna be the same differences? As I said, I live two doors down, my driveway is consistently blocked. My children, both my children are here, they're nurses, they come in sometimes 12, many times They come in sometimes to twelve, anytime from twelve to three in the morning. My son is always on call, he needs to get out of there. He has a certain time, he has to get to the hospital. Now, can, will you be able to wait for the cops to come to remove that car? What's the timeline?
Well, ma'am, here's all I can suggest to you. I should suggest that your son that has to get to work at a certain time, make sure he parks on the streets so nobody could ever take him away, or stop him.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Now, wait, 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 wait. As for blocking your driveway, ma'am, ma'am, as for dropping your driveway, all you can do is call the police.
I have done that.
Well, you do whatever you time you do. Trust me, whoever gets a ticket or gets their car towed away, they'll never park in front of your driveway again.
Oh, believe me, I have done that, and it hasn't told me, and they still, because it's not the same in the indoor. It's never the same, if I got a ticket once, I'm gonna park it. But someone else has done it, someone else does that.
But ma'am, we cannot, this board cannot control the public's watch.
I understand that, and that is, that alone is not my issue. My issue is, again, people are going to be parking on the street. They are, if they can't find a parking, they're gonna be blocking. I tried, my husband tried to go and paint the, the road, so they'll see. Because a lot of them play, oh, we didn't know it was a, a library. I put a sign there, I'm like, you could read, oh, well, they're probably too drunk to read it. So I was hoping maybe if I painted the floor, they'll see that, before they drive up and park. Police officer told me, I can't do that, that's for the city, that's for the town.
The curb, I mean.
That's correct.
That's true.
Yeah, so of course I couldn't do that. The other situation is, like I said, the security, is it gonna be just for the bar, the bar, restaurant, the bar? Or will they be a little more concerned, like when they're, when it closes? What happens to the people as they move out? I mean, I don't know what type of people are gonna be there. I hope it's gonna be more upscale, and if that's the case, probably, yeah, I have nothing to worry about. But based on the past, I am worried about it.
You remember, you have to remember, based on the past, it was a bar.
I understand that.
Now it's gonna be primarily a restaurant.
Also, remember, that bar was supposed to be enclosed at all times. It's an enclosed, the, the, uh, the people who considered that bar should be inside, not outside. Am I correct?
That's, they spoke, they can't drink outside, no?
Yeah, but they're obviously drinking outside, and the, nobody has done anything about it.
Well, ma'am, that's why you have council meetings, for people to come to council meetings and complain about stuff like this. But this board, this board can only deal with the application before us. And I'm telling you right now, the approval for the bar was done back in the eighties. They can open up a bar there tomorrow, and there's nothing you can do about it.
I understand that.
They have the security there too, aren't they?
Yeah, I, she does, but she wants to know if they're gonna be following people out when they close. That's up to the, to the employer, but I think the employer might do that, because he wants to make sure when his place closes, there's no problems, because you gotta remember, he's got a liquor license, and he's gotta protect that liquor license.
I, I understand that, I'm just sharing my concerns, and, you know, making it known that this is what it is.
And he's hearing your concerns.
Like I said, you know, I'm all for opening a business there, but I would also like my peace of fire. And the stench, I'm very concerned about the stench, because where I live, it's gonna go directly to my, if I open my windows. And I like to open my windows inside. So stench is something that I'm very worried about, and I would like to know how it is a restaurant, so it's gonna be...
Well, they come under certain requirements that's done by the construction code official. There's health requirements, and, and, and there's requirements about how high the, the chimney has to be and everything else. That's all requirements that are done by the health and the construction code official, both. Am I right, Mr. DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Yes, Jim.
Thank you.
Can you ask your question, sir?
Yes, you can ask her a question.
And do you operate a business in here?
I don't operate a business, I rent a business, so sunshine, day care.
And do you have parking for that daycare?
Uh, no, that's the off-street parking.
You have no parking at all for that?
No.
No further questions?
Nothing sufficient for myself.
Okay, any other questions, my members of the board, the witness, members of the public with witness? No? Anybody else wish to give testimony? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
John J. Wayan, last name B.R.C.E., eighteen Art Adams Street.
Raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, you swear your testimony and comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
My only concerns may be maybe the hours of operation.
The hours have already been listed, that he's looking to open from four to two o'clock in the morning, which is required, which is allowed for a bar restaurant. Uh, but however, in the future, he may open as early as eleven o'clock in the morning.
My concern would be maybe from Sunday through Thursday, open to two o'clock, if there's any noise.
Sir. A bar is allowed there. A bar could stay till two in the morning. So that's academic, it's already there, it's already been approved for thirty years, and there's nothing this board could do about that. This is going to be a restaurant bar. So you're stuck with that, no matter what happens to you.
Okay?
Okay? You're welcome. Any other members of the public wish to give testimony? Yes, sir, come on up.
Walter Aziles? Yes, could you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
With regard to this application, you swear your testimony shall be the truth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To make a long story short, everybody just, I've already mentioned and vented their, their different points of view and everything about the place. I just wanna make clear that we do encourage this type of businesses to be set up for the town, for the benefit, as long as it's properly managed, any business can work, okay? I, I respect your opinion in terms of the place, and I really appreciate the effort they're actually doing to run your business as well, but I have to disagree a little bit in the sense that it's not the same to, to make a type of opinion about a business that doesn't directly affect us as a neighbor, and a business that affects you as a neighbor, as, as previously stated. You guys probably don't be near the property where this business is supposed to be opened. So therefore, we are, you are, in, in reality, you guys are not really feeling the same worry or, or being affected in the same way as we, the neighbors, will be. We welcome the investments in town, as long as they are properly managed. Security should be a main concern for the business. I don't wanna see cars parking Mr. Homacko's property at two-thirty in the morning, after they have closed the business, when they have loud music playing on their cars, having sex in the cars. Where is the security? And I'm gonna say, if I am the owner of that property, sir, if I am the owner of that property, shouldn't I be liable because of what happened on my, on my property? It's my responsibility, right?
Well, no. But I'm not gonna get into that, but I'm gonna say one thing based upon what you said. One thing based upon what you said, that none of us live in that neighborhood. Let me explain something to you. If we did live in that neighborhood, we would not be allowed to hear the case. Anyone who is within two hundred feet of an application is not allowed to hear the case. And that is so, we do things objectively. This is a quasi-judicial board, and we have to look at cases objectively.
Correct.
And that's required by state law. Okay?
Yes, so, bottom line, I think the business can work, as long as it's properly managed. And I'm looking forward to maybe a conditional opening of the business. And let me explain what I mean with this. I agree with most of my neighbors here as well, that the operating hours, let me just finish. The operating hours may be too long and too late for the area where the business is, is supposed to be opened. Let me just finish, please, okay? What I'm suggesting here is, open the business with a conditional hours until midnight, and depending on the behavior of the business, and the type of management that they do, then we can see the possibility of extending the hours as needed.
We cannot do that when there's a liquor license involved, sir. When it goes by the ABC laws, they're allowed to stay open till two o'clock in the morning. There's nothing we can do.
The one thing that I'm requesting is security, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Last call. Nobody else? Okay. Mr. Gassillon, do you wish to sum up?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanna review some of the comments made by the interested citizens. First woman, Maria Carrier, eleven Agnes Street. She really was complaining about the previous operation, and she's concerned about security. My client made it clear that he will have, when necessary, up to three security people. She also talked about a hundred and sixty people being in attendance. If there's ever a hundred and sixty people in attendance, my client will be ecstatic. And if he has a hundred and sixty on a regular basis, it would be phenomenal. That's not very likely. She wants a nice establishment to be there. My clients, I think, should've convinced the board, and they obviously convinced the adjacent property owner, that they're going to have a solid establishment. Dave is at five forty-three Union. He says he's had a nightmare for years, but he understands the bar has a right to be there. It's most important what kind of establishment it is. And this, based on what we see here, should be a very substantial, well-secured establishment. And also, the specter of this whole thing is, the bar's there before anybody else. The bar has been there as long as I can remember, not nineteen eighty-six, but nineteen fifty-six. There's always been a bar at that location. Juan Fernandez, was obviously my best witness. He runs the daycare center. He says this is a different breed of person. He's checked the person out every which way, and different than the previous people. And he thinks it's something that's good for the town. He thinks that this group of gentlemen, these two gentlemen, are on the same page as the community. He's worried about beautifying. He also indicated the busiest time for the school is six-thirty, eight-thirty a.m. The other times are sporadic. He's got confidence in my client. He's got seventy-one students, and most of, or he said a lot, I'm gonna change that, a lot of his staff ubers back and forth. Frank Roses, five forty Union Avenue was the next. He said the speakeasy can't be compared to the business coming in. It was not a family-type business. He's put money into his building, and he thinks this company is gonna put money into their building and bring jobs in. And the previous owner had no security, this owner will have security. Woman complained about cars parking on her driveway. She got quick response from the Belvedere Police Department. They came and towed the cars away. That's all you can really expect. Charles Reichman indicated it was prohibited use. Well, it's not a prohibited use, it's been there forever. There's a variance from nineteen eighty-six, it was there long before the variance. Yes, there's an expansion issue here, this is an expansion of pre-existing non-conforming use, certainly not prohibited, has a right to be there. The parking, thirty-four spaces is what we're talking about. As Mr. DiLorenzo pointed out, restaurants don't have a parking requirement. There's thirty-four spaces because of the bar. Proper management and proper security, that's what everybody's worried about. That's certainly what my client has shown they are ready to do. The use is there for fifty years, and the adjacent premises has, and probably more than fifty years, and the adjacent premises has been used as a restaurant, or a sub-shop, or a hot dog place, or some food thing, all the time. Therefore, there is no substantial change. There's been an improvement in that my client is taking care of the parking for the residents. There will be more spaces for the residents, there'll be loading and unloading available, space on the property, and there'll be a dumpster in the back. There's street parking available. It's the day of the Uber, the young people, they Uber. They don't take any chances of driving after they've been out streaking. There's local patrons, local residents who patronize this place, because they're gonna like it, because it's gonna be well-run, because it's a sports bar. Place I go, I'm not a big drinker, I go to a sports bar all the time. I love going to a bar, having something to eat, and watching the sports on TV. They leased a piece of property, not directly across the street, but certainly very, very convenient. I know other restaurants that have valet parking, that have to go blocks for the valet lot they go to. This has got a, a valet lot a half a block away. Again, without the bar, wouldn't even need a parking requirement. This is gonna be much better, these two buildings has an integrated use, much better. It's looked sloppy forever, ever. It's had failing business since, since the new class was there thirty years ago. This is a thing the town needs. Again, it's not a new use. Just a couple of legal points, just a couple of leading cases. This isn't a use that's there, we're not introducing a new use. It's a pre-existing use. Couple of leading cases, Burbage versus May, Hill and Cole, Cole versus Failon. In Burbage, the court allowed the expansion of a legally permitted pre-existing junkyard because the relocation of unsightly parts made it look better, and improved landscaping, helped the aesthetic improvement. Major case, aesthetic improvement. In Cole, Boyd said you may consider the fact that the non-conforming use already exists on the premises. Not necessarily showing that the variance to the property granted to create the pre-existing non-conforming use. So when you got the pre-existing use, the benefits flow very easily, and the proofs are very different. You're not introducing a discordant use. And again, I'm gonna repeat one thing, my client set up the three security people, that's the big concern. We shouldn't be judged by what was there before. We should be judged by what might've been there thirty years ago, and was a well-run business. Obviously, there was a poorly-run business there, last, I guess they even lost their, whatever. But at this point, I've got responsible people who are ready to add a very viable, good business to the township of Bevilles, and I think the application should be approved. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gassillon. Members of the board?
Just one question. No dumpster, it's not a dumpster.
Garbage cans, no dumpster, in, in enclosed area.
No dumpster.
You're a hundred percent right, Mr. Lawrence. Closed area.
Yeah, no dumpster.
I'm sorry, garbage, garbage cans, my apologies.
No way.
Your apology is volatile.
So, if I, should I start?
You can start.
So, this is a long history here, but, so I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna give my age away here. I was there forty-some odd years ago, when it was a well-run establishment. I never went into the other establishment, because it was undesirable, I agree with you all. I do agree with you all. So the question I ask myself, you know, I have to look at it from a legal point of view. How do I balance the two? That's my job, I'm gonna think about it. And for mine, is not to exacerbate what you went through, which I, I truly believe, I drove by there. I don't live contract to where I've been, I only live like four blocks away. Now, I know it's not my next door, I get it, but I, I frequent that area very frequently. But my point, and I'm trying to make these, that do I allow what was there to weasel his way back in? Because it, that's not, we can't stop it. And I, I'm, I'm being blunt, and it's not nice to hear, but we can't stop what was there, stop there again, unfortunately. That being said, or do I want to try to mitigate the possibility of that happening again? And from my purview, if I interlude, and that's the word I wanna use, if I interlude the bar, part of it, by giving them some way, other, to make money, which is the tables. So, and my, from my perspective, the only way we're gonna make this a better situation is by diluting that potential of having the wrong clientele there. And the more that we promote, you know, the restaurant side of it, and raising the level of clientele, the better off the, the neighborhood's gonna be, and the better off the township is gonna be. So from my point of view, I don't think we really have a choice, other than say, no, we don't want it, and then we jump, you now are subject back to a full-blown bar. I, I personally don't want a full-blown bar there. I think that puts you right back to where you were, from my perspective, point of view. So, and I know that's a bitter pill to say, and I'm not one to sugarcoat things, and I'm, I'm, I try to fix things. I can't fix this a hundred percent, because the ordinance, the building was allowed to have a bar there, even before I started going there, back in nineteen seventy-six. Believe me on that. But my point is, I'm any other, how do I help mitigate? And I think allowing an upscale or a, a higher level of clientele, and, and to be, it's really truthful here. When I went there in nineteen seventy-six, you know where I parked? In the Sunoco Station, that's what it was back then, across the street. That's where I parked. But no valet. But, again, but the reason why I bring that into play, because when it was ran away, that's what, you know, that's what we did. That was our, that was our local place to go. That's where we went. And we didn't have Uber, but I'll, I'll tell you, I was able to, to walk from my home to that location, because I wasn't that far away. So, I personally think the best way to mitigate what they, and I believe you one hundred percent, I, I believe you all, that you experienced that. But how do I help you? Unfortunately, it's not, there is not a perfect fit, fit, but there is, I believe, this is a way to mitigate it. And the more we help them be successful, the less you're gonna experience the experience that you had before. That's my personal opinion, I don't know how you all feel, but, I, I'm done, I give you my, my two cents.
Okay, uh, like Mr. Valano, I grew up on Union Avenue, one block from there. I had a business at five forty Union Avenue. So I do know that area. I do know when there was a good business run there, it was run well. It was a restaurant, it was a bar, it was a bar, and it was a restaurant. And earliest I remember was nineteen seventy-three. And I, it was a, it was a straight bar back then. And what I mean is just a long bar. A, a new owner came in, and they made a round circle bar, it was just a bar. Then they put food in there, and it was run very well, it was a great place to go, we loved to go there. As a family, my mother, father, and all the O's went there. But then I grew older, I still was there, I had a business there, five forty Union Avenue. I owned a business there for a few years. And between living there, owning a business there, and the bar restaurant next door, was there problems at times? Yes, there was, I'm not gonna lie to you. Yes, there was, I'm not gonna lie. But, in today's day and age, with the new type of people coming in, and the type of, what they're gonna be putting into this business, is not something where they're gonna be wanting it to be run down. It's they're putting in their, they're putting their life into this. This is a life and blood into a business. And with the ordinance we have, restaurants do not have a restriction on parking. I don't make the laws, I don't make the ordinances. But it is the ordinance, and that's something we have to follow. And that's why, in my opinion, I wish him a lot of luck, and I hope it does well.
I've been in Bellevue a long time, and I patronize both the businesses out there. And I think this is an upgrade, I think it's gonna be an asset that's gonna be taken care, and they're gonna follow everything that the town requires. And I think it's a good business that's going in there. I've been here, been in Bellevue a long time, and I did patronize both of them when they were, whatever they were. That's it.
As far as the owners go, I have a concern if this was gonna be their first venture into a restaurant or something like that, but they're well-established, they run several successful, highly-successful restaurants. So, they know what they're doing, so I think it's gonna be well-run, and nothing at all like what was there previously.
Mr. Lopez. I want to say that I live very close to that neighborhood. I heard a lot of the neighbors say about the board members that we don't frequent the neighborhood, or we're not familiar with it. I actually drove down Union Avenue every morning and every afternoon, I'd say for about eight years, taking my daughters to school. So, I'm very familiar with that area. I passed it every day to day, I'm familiar with the traffic, in the mornings, and also around 3:00 p.m. afternoon, I go pick them up. And I'm familiar with what was going on with that bar that was there prior as well. I've seen a couple of fights. I heard about a couple of incidents that occurred in that place. I don't believe that we're gonna see anything of that type with this new establishment. I was looking at the locations that they have in Manhattan. I was sitting up here, that's why I asked about the locations. They look very nice, they look very well-kept. These folks look like they know what they're doing, unlike what was there before. And as mentioned before, if we don't go forward with something like this, we can have the same nightmare I was there before, because they're allowed to go back in and create that nuisance again. We have another location that came before the board, that we approved to extend their dining area. They neither provide security nor valet parking. This, this new establishment is willing to provide that to appease its neighbors and work with its neighbors. I think that's something that should really be taken into consideration, and I think it's something that going forward is gonna quell all those fears that people experienced while that other bar was there. So, I really think that this is gonna be a good thing, not only for the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the town itself. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett. Yeah, I'd like to focus on the relationship that I think everyone should have with the new owners, because that seems to be your fear, and he seems to be very proactive in wanting to protect his new investment, and wanting to protect those around him. So, I think this is an opportunity for you to get to know this new business owner, and for him to get to know you, so that you feel comfortable coming to him if you have a concern. I don't know what that other establishment was. I can only imagine from the descriptions that I'm getting, and as a woman, how I would feel trying to approach someone that probably wouldn't want to even listen to you, would probably, you know, throw up on your feet if you were standing there. This doesn't seem to be that sense. So, to me, I think focus on the new establishment. It's blending in well, it's going to blend in well with your little community there, and I think this is something that we could all look forward to visiting in the future. So, I think it's gonna be very interesting to see this happen.
Mr. Sheldon.
Let me preface my remarks by saying, I think it goes without saying, everyone on this board is enormously sensitive and empathetic towards the residents of the area. We all understand the problems you've faced in years gone by, but my perception of the applicants is that this is, this is a new crew. They're really committed to being good community partners, and they're determined to, to make sure that this business is run properly, and to undo any of the wrongs that may have happened in the past. Moreover, we're going to put as conditions of this approval, the mandate for security. So, that by itself should mitigate any of the problems you've experienced in the past with previous renditions of this speakeasy, or the other bars that have been there. Moreover, I, we have a new town hall administration, which I know is determined to make sure that new businesses not only complement the community, but are properly supportive of local residents. Our police department too, is newly invigorated under the leadership of Chief Minikini. And I'm sure whatever may have gone by, happened in the past, that's not gonna happen now with Chief Minikini at the helm. So, I, again, I understand where some of the residents are coming from with your concerns about this, but I don't think history's gonna repeat itself. I think this is a brand-new era, I think this is gonna actually be a really good complement to this part of Bellevue, and I think only positive things are gonna come from it in the years to come. So, with that said, I'm supportive of this, this application.
I have been talking all night, so I will be very brief. What I want to say is, I've made a lot of remarks all night, and remarks were vaguely that this will only be an asset compared to what was there before. To me, it's gonna be like night and day, and I think the residents will realize that once the gentleman opens. He's done everything possible. The members of this board have mentioned everything in a positive way. The applicant has gone to his neighbors, the applicant is gonna have security, the applicant is going to have valet parking. He's doing everything right. And to hold it against him because of what's happened in the past would be a mortal sin, would not be right. And since he's concentrated, and I even mentioned, all there's gonna be is 33 spaces at both bars combined. Everything else is going to be sit-down for eating. And I have never seen a place that's primarily a restaurant have all the problems that you had previously when this was primarily a bar. And as Mr. Lopez said, we just approved a place within the town, who does a fantastic business, does not have valet parking, does not have security, and there's never an incident that I can remember in that bar. And a guard restaurant, excuse me. And to be honest with you, I think this will only be a plus. It will invigorate the neighborhood, make it come better, back to the way it was, what it was years ago, when Mr. Milano used to go in that neighborhood, to eat there. And hopefully, the food is good, because then I'll go and eat there. But, I have to tell you, this is only a good thing for the town overall. And I think the neighbors, once they are in business, will be very happy with these gentlemen. Okay? So, I will be voting in favor of the board. That's later. That is not matter. What do you plan to hear? All right. Mr. Lopez wants to add something.
Actually, Bob, we're having. I just, I just wanted to ask if the board was in agreement, and it was possible to do it, once again, in the residential area, if they would commit to maybe putting planters on the sidewalk for flowers during the warm weather, to dress up the curb and make it look nice for the neighborhood.
Making that a condition is satisfactory. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're gonna leave, leave quietly, because we haven't taken a vote yet, we're still on tape. She's, she's still taking the transcription, okay? So, it's now speak, or ever hold your peace, be quiet, please. Go ahead.
Here's what we have.
Hold on, before you go.
Go ahead.
Regarding Mr. Lopez's comment, the plan. I just want, you know, I know the town is considering doing things of that nature, if they, the uniform, in other words, same type that the town council is considering now, that there's some kind of uniformity, where, you know, whenever, they're putting other locations, it would look kind of the same, and kind of present some kind of town theme. That's all I'm thinking. I mean, I'm not, you know, designing's not my thing, but common sense is.
We could probably run that by the beautification committee.
Right, that's, I know there's a committee out there. So, if you guys can kind of maybe use something like that, make it uniform, where it's that simple, you give them the specification from what you guys are building or making, they do the same.
She's on the. So, go ahead.
Here's, here's what we have, and we're dealing with a D variance, a D2, plus dimensions. I think the only one that's new would be, be parking. Everything else seems to be previously existing. I don't know if there's a cycling involved, but we might want to update it too, since there's some exterior work. In addition to the conditions regarding Tom's report, Frankie's report, the, our normal conditions, what I have is this, how do you want to handle that venting? The venting, I know it's gonna be.
According, according to the construction at the Health Department, whatever they say.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, Frankie?
Yes. If there's any step-down issues between the two buildings, that's another construction.
It's like the, what's in Mr. Harris's report.
Right.
Address, which they said they would.
Yeah.
That goes from painting to sidewalk repair to.
That's pretty much, you know, walk construction issues. How about private haulers, where you arrange a time to minimize disturbance? Someone mentioned not before 8:00 a.m.? It's a board thing.
I think, I think it would be best that they work it out with their neighbors, that's a, that's a good olive branch, in my opinion.
But not before 8:00 a.m. I want that in there.
I think you should work it out with the neighbors, like I said.
Okay. Security cameras, some security company will be provided. I don't think we should micromanage that. Parking across the street, it was indicated they'd have full access to the lot, which I think is important, per a lease, yes.
They have a lease, correct?
Right, but we should have, it would be.
Do you want a copy of the lease in the, in the.
But, but if they need the spaces, they indicated that they would have full access at any time, they pay for it. So, the rest of it's, and the papers, which will be uniform with the town committee. That's what I have.
Big thing of the year.
That's a plan.
And the hours.
The hours, we said in the beginning, I'm, I'm always paying attention, 4:00 to 2:00, and if they're gonna.
They said they may go as early as 11:00 to 2:00.
They may adjust them, as the business closes or whatnot.
Right, okay. That's it. The valet parking. The valet parking.
I said valet.
Security. And I would make the hours 11:00 to 2:00. Put the hours 11:00 to 2:00, it's up to that. They can start at 4:00, if they want to go as early as 11:00, I'm not gonna prevent them from doing it. They shouldn't have to come back before the board, okay? 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Okay, next step, okay?
Our chairman had a good request, and I don't think it was answered. Should we have a copy of the lease agreement with the parking lot across the street?
Can you provide that to Mr. DiLorenzo? The lease for the parking. So, that's fine. And that's it. Five votes needed to pass, okay? To approve.
Who wants to make a motion with the conditions? Motion made by Mr. Caruso with the conditions listed. Okay, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lopez. Clerk call the roll. Mr. Palladino will not, Palladino will not be voting because he's at all. Palladino, that's yours. I'm sorry.
Bennett.
Yes.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Milano.
Yes.
Del Gershio.
Yes. Group seven to nothing. Motion to adjourn.